All right, it is 5:30. Is this working?
Yep. Test, test, test. Hello, hello, hello.
They're both on, but...
Yeah, I can't remember what we did last time.
It might be over there.
I think you're right. It's over here somewhere.
Right at my feet.
Hello, hello. Hello.
There you go. We're good.
All right, we'll try this again. Okay, we will call to order the Provo City Planning Commission hearing for May 23rd, 2018. We have, we had eight items on the agenda this evening. One item, item one, is now continued, so we will not be hearing that item this evening. We will also, in its place, hear item seven first. The items on the agenda that are marked with an asterisk require Provo Planning Commission recommendation to municipal council, who makes the final decision. Non-start are items that we make decisions to approve, continue, or disapprove. We'll start tonight with prayer and pledge. Prayer by Mr. Smith and pledge by Ms. Ellsworth.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this night and we give thee thanks for this wonderful land that we live in, the great people that serve and assist in making this a great place to live, and the wonderful citizens that we have here. We thank thee for the blessings that thou hast bestowed upon us by way of the city and the area that we live in and the abundance that we enjoy. We ask that thou would please continue to watch out over this city and those who serve and who live in it, and we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one commissioner who is en route and may be here shortly, but let's go ahead and do the rail roll call of the commissioners.
Shannon Ellsworth, and I have no conflict.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Jay Monroe, no conflicts.
Brian Smith, no conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflict.
Thank you. All right, so item seven is going to be our first item read in this evening. Item seven, the Community Development Department requests an amendment to section 14.06.020 definitions to make the definition of family consistent with Utah State Code. This has citywide application, and Josh Yost will present this item.
Thank you. This is a very simple text amendment. Our text has, for a period of years, been not compliant with state code, and we have just been following the state code which supersedes our code. We've been asked by a constituent to, through a council representative, to make this change. This change is accomplished relatively easily by simply changing the definition of family to three related or unrelated individuals and any children of such individuals. And then we removed the related sections in, under the batching singles definition, which outlined the areas of the city, which previously had been limited to only two unrelated individuals. So this is one of those rare instances where we actually lose a number of pages of code and accomplish our ends, so we were happy about that. If there's any questions, I'll answer them.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? No questions? Are there any neighborhood chairs who would like to comment on this item? Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? If not, I'll turn it back to the commissioners for further discussion or a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
For item number seven, I move that we approve the language to be consistent with section 14.06.02 for the definition of family to make it consistent with Utah State Code.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor of recommending approval to municipal council for item seven?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so we'll forward a unanimous recommendation, a positive recommendation to municipal council. Okay, the next item.
I think we're just approving, we're not forwarding a recommendation.
Item seven is asterisked.
It says recommend approval, yeah.
Oh, we recommend, okay.
Yes. Okay, item number two. Provo City Economic Development Department requests a zone change from Planning Industrial Commercial, PIC, to Region Shopping Center, SC3, for property from 920 South to East Bay Boulevard and from University Avenue to 180 East. To encourage commercial redevelopment, East Bay Neighborhood and Aaron Ardmore will present this item.
Thank you. So, as we look at this map up here, if you're familiar with East Bay, it starts up here with the Taco Bell and goes down here to East Bay Boulevard. Restaurants here, Sam's Club, Furniture Store. All of these are commercial, restaurant, or retail users, and it's been that way for quite a while. As economic development seeks to further attract more businesses and better businesses to this area, it just makes sense for this zone to be changed to a shopping center zone rather than a more of an industrial commercial zone, because that's just not how it's developed over the years. This proposal has gone through staff review, we support it 100 percent. Again, it makes sense for the area, and I think it will help in revitalizing East Bay with the users they can bring in and the signage that would be allowed in that zone as well. So that's all I have.
Commissioners, any question for Mr. Ardmore? If not, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward, Provo City Economic Development.
Hi, I'm Cameron from Economic Development.
I think the mic's on.
It's definitely on, isn't it?
Now it's not.
There it is.
It's not turning on.
Is it on?
Don't keep going, one more.
Green light's on.
The light's not on here.
Maybe the recorder's picking it up, but it's not broadcasting here.
There you go.
It's on now.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, thank you. Sorry.
So, yeah, my name is Cameron, I'm with Provo City Economic Development.
And did you want to just describe?
Yeah, so, so, this is a little, leave the pointer. So, as you know, so recently Woodside Capital outside of Texas recently bought the entire East Bay Center, and they just recently announced a Ross coming into the center. City Council, in the past, oh, maybe a month or so ago, maybe a little longer, we have done a sales tax incentive for the developer. And in so doing, they're actually talking with other national retailers right now to bring more businesses to, to East Bay. And so going from a PIC to an SC3 just makes more sense for the Woodside Capital, for their owners, along with, as Mr. Ardmore has stated, it just allows for better development and for the area.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? If not, thank you very much. Are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? I see none. Any members of the community who would like to speak to this item? All right, I will turn it back over to the planning commissioners for discussion or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Rowan?
I propose that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council to change the zoning from PIC to SC3 for property from 920 South to East Bay Boulevard and from University Ave to 180 East to encourage commercial development.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Howard, seconds. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation for item two?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, so we'll forward a positive recommendation, and that was unanimous. Okay, item number three. IHC Healthcare Services, Inc., requests an electronic display sign located at 1134 North 500 West in the healthcare facilities HCF Zone, and this affects the North Park neighborhood. And Mr. Wright will present this item.
Thank you. So, here's the proposed location for the sign. It's at the corner of Bulldog and 500 West. Zoomed in here, they proposed to place it where an existing sign is located there on the corner. The type of sign that they're requesting is a freestanding sign that's over five feet, which then requires a conditional use permit to allow it to go up to a height of 25 feet. The proposed sign is 25 feet. The sign would be a three-sided electronic display sign to help with visibility from different angles in this intersection. The sign location meets the code requirements, not to exceed over the property line and to be not located within the required yard setback. The sign area, or the portion of the sign, doesn't exceed the code requirement as it's under 200 square feet. And staff finds that the proposed sign with the conditional use permit being granted would, would meet the requirements of the code for this type of sign. And would recommend as conditions of approval that the sign height is not to exceed the 25 feet that's permitted, that the sign shall not be located in the required setback, and that the sign brightness and high churn shall comply with the sections of code that regulate those, as outlined in the staff report. If there's any questions, we may be here to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Wright from the commissioners? Mr. Howard?
Churn rate, that's the, the refresh time between images, is that what that means? And that's eight seconds apart or something like that?
Correct, yep, that's how often this, the sign copy is, is allowed to change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll turn it over to the applicant, Yescow LLC, to present this item.
My name is Jeff Krantz, I'm with Young Electric Sign Company.
I'm Josh Rotinsky, I'm the project manager, Utah Valley, for the hospital replacement.
And we're just, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the sign, and if Josh can help on anything about meeting the needs for the sign.
Any questions for the applicant?
Can you just, can you just tell us a little bit about why the hospital feels like they need a, a sign like this? What studies have they done to suggest that this sign will kind of significantly increase revenue, or, you know, what, I would just love to know kind of the thinking, the motivation? From an outsider's perspective, it seems like the hospital itself is sign enough. I mean, it's an enormous institution and structure, and I, you know, to be honest, I'm just really skeptical about the need, the need for the sign. So, I would love to have you speak to that, that skepticism.
Yeah, no, happy to. So, is, and I don't, I'm not in the communications department, as I've worked with them on various things, the one thing I've learned in my role as a project manager there is that, I mean, you need to communicate several ways to several different parties, and the more that we can get the message out, the more people we can hit. Obviously, the hospital itself is a big billboard standing up there, but the intent with this is to communicate specific messages about an event. There's a lot of live well promotion that we're doing right now as we've added that department and that service line to our hospital recently. We have events that raise money for cancer, just, as opposed to just being a hospital, we want people to know about other things that are inside, other services that we provide, and other events that we put on. And we see this intersection as a good opportunity to get more of that information out in, in different ways as opposed to just seeing the hospital or sending an email out.
So, did the hospital, as far as, and I recognize you may not be in a position to answer some of these questions, but did the hospital conduct studies to, to support this, or is it just like, we really think this would help do, advertise the programs we run, or the events, the events we hold, and?
I, I can't speak for any studies that were done to that intent. Jeff here could probably speak more to the efficacy of billboards and, and boards like this that we're proposing. Again, I just go back to my comment, that the, the more various ways we can communicate to different audiences, the more we can get our message out. And so from a high level, that's the intent. Again, Jeff being in the business could probably speak to that a little bit more than I could.
Yeah, I'll just mention, there's been several of the Inner Mountains facilities that do have these kind of LED signs, and they've gotten the use for them. There's, there's charity events, there's 5K runs, there's classes, there's reminders of flu shots, things like that, that they found are very good to stay in touch with the, the public and let them know of things that maybe everyone doesn't think about so readily. But we did meet with the neighborhood councils, both neighborhood councils, on two occasions, once with both of them, once with North Park, and tried to alleviate some concerns and misunderstandings about the sign. Like you guys just mentioned, it is an eight-second hold time here. You have a very restrictive, well-written code, but it's very restrictive to, to have a message to be conveyed on an eight-second hold time, and then you can change the message. The messages need to be clean and concise, and, and, and Inner Mountains' marketing folks have gotten good at that, to try to say something clear and readable, and, and then have it change again, and even do some of the public service stuff on it as well. And the only other thing that was a big concern to the neighbors, they thought it was going to be flashing and blinking, and, and your code is very well-written in that it's, the light, the brightness levels are very contained, and the whole refresh time is very contained.
I just have one question. Why 25 feet tall? Why, why not 10 or 15 feet tall?
I think, and this is part of really how city codes are written for signs, the, you need to either be able to see under a sign or over a sign. And it's to keep very good clear viewing angles for traffic, and we're setting this back even farther than it's even need, needs to be given the code. There's a clear view area to make sure that there's no, your traffic engineers don't have any issues of any vehicles having obstructed views, but a monument sign usually is made small and to, that you can see over it. A, a pole sign is what they kind of call this, is so you can see under it, so the mass is minimized underneath the sign. So...
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite any neighborhood chairs who are present who would like to speak to this item, and please state your name for the record.
My name is Kirby, North Park Neighborhood Chair. Have just a short presentation, this is Eric, the vice chair of the neighborhood. I'll just wait for that to come up. We did have a couple of, of, you can flip to the next slide. We did have a couple of meetings, we had about 50 to 75 neighbors that, that attended that, provided feedback. There were concerns raised, and can say it was very nice to work with the hospital. They agreed to work with the planning commission to address some of those concerns, so we're more glad about that. Next slide. The three concerns that there were, one, that there'd be light pollution, this is, there are, there is residential nearby, that was one of the concerns. The other concern was that, excuse me, the location of the sign, considering that there was going to be, that there's a redesign of both Bulldog and State being considered, and that's not so much a concern because the, the hospital understood that, and we've actually seen the, the plans, and the right-of-way is not increasing for either of those there, so I don't think that's a big concern. The third, which was big, was that the safety, that there was a safety issue having this sign located at the intersection that is extremely busy. Next slide. With the light pollution, the residents were concerned about the brightness, like Jeff said, the representative with, with the hospital, with the sign company. We do have strict standards in Provo, and if they follow those, I don't think the lumens are going to be an issue. However, the hospital was amenable to the request by residents that, that it shut off at a certain time, and we're suggesting sometime around midnight, we'll, we'll leave that up to you to make a determination, but the hospital actually suggested that. That didn't come from the neighborhood, they said that they would be willing to do that, to shut it off at a certain time. Next slide. The, this is not really a concern, given that we've, it was just not until yesterday that we were able to view some of the plans for 500 and Bulldog, so, so this is not really a concern because the right-of-way is not being increased at the intersection. Next slide. But this is where it is a, is a concern. Bulldog and State is a busy intersection. There have been multiple studies, a lot of them have come out recently, showing that there is an issue with signs, particularly electronic signs, on roadways, particularly at intersections. Now, the reason this data is, is coming forth in the last few years is because it's really difficult to measure, when a sign's put in, what the impact of that is in terms of accident rates, because typically on roads, the things are changing. It's not static. You don't just change the sign and nothing else changes, you're also seeing increases in, in, in the amount of cars that are driving on that street and, and other signs that are put in place, so it's really hard to isolate that one thing. But in the last few years, what's really interesting, they've been able to do simulations with 3D modeling and computers and putting people in them, and allowing a person to drive on a street without LED electronic signs, and then to drive on the same street with them, and to measure the impact in distraction and their ability to drive and maintain the vehicle. In 2009, the ASHTO, the American Association of State and Highway Transportation officials, made this statement, that advertisements should be kept to a minimum at busy intersections and areas where drivers need to concentrate. That's the recommendation from, from that federal organization. Next slide. Just a reminder about conditional use permits. As a neighborhood, we understand that a conditional use permit means that it's granted, but that conditions need to be put in place if there are negative impacts and they can be mitigated. So we understand this sign's going to happen. What we're asking for is a couple of conditions that will perhaps mitigate this most important concern of the safety at the intersection. The, the hospital volunteered turning off the sign at midnight. If you agree to that, I think that's an acceptable thing. And we'd also ask that, that there be a 300-foot area from the intersection where the sign is not placed, but that they locate it further down State Street or further down Bulldog. If you look at the next slide, I've drawn a little diagram that shows you. Currently, that building has been demolished, this is all going to be parking lot. The hospital has a very, fairly large campus here, that they have a lot of options of where they could place this sign. We're not asking them to put it further back in the campus, they could put it further down on State, right up on the right-of-way, or further down on Bulldog, right up on the right-of-way. We're just very concerned about this intersection, being that it's a, a major intersection for pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers as well, and that's only going to increase with the changes that are happening to State and Bulldog to make it more pedestrian bicycle-friendly. Do you have any questions for myself or Eric from the neighborhood?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on something you mentioned, almost casually. When you said we understand that the sign is going to happen, tell me, I mean, I thought that's what we were deciding tonight, but...
With a conditional use permit, the, the assumption is that, that this, that there, you get what you're asking for, but you have to put conditions on it to mitigate it. For you to say, no, the sign can't be, can't be given, you would open yourself up to a lawsuit if, if IHC wanted to, unless there were extreme circumstances stating of why there is no way to mitigate the negative impacts. In a situation like this, and in almost all situations with conditional use permits, you can very, you can find ways to mitigate the negative impacts. This is a good example, there are ways to mitigate the negative impact. I, I don't think you'd be in, in a good place if you did not permit them to have this sign.
Any other questions for the applicant? I'm sorry, for the neighborhood chair.
I just wanted to say one quick thing, too. Some of the statistics they gave at the, the open house they had for the Bulldog redesign showed that the Bulldog corridor had about seven and a half times the national average of traffic accidents, and that's one of the drivers behind the redesign. And I think having a big sign there might contribute to some of those higher accident rates that we're looking to mitigate with this big project anyways.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, you had a question?
I guess to kind of go along with some of the discussion, this is for staff, so by right, the applicants can have an electronic display, display sign.
Correct.
And it's just a matter of going from what height up to 25 feet.
Correct. The, the type of conditional use permit that's being sought here isn't for the type of sign, so it's not for an electronic display sign, it's for the sign height to be, oh, signs over five feet are required to have a conditional use permit. So it's, it's for the height and not the sign type.
Okay. So, and I don't want to get too bogged down in the details, but the idea that the sign would not be located on the corner, in staff's view, do we have that kind of deference to say that as a condition, to mean by right, they can have a sign on the corner? So I guess the question would be...
By right, they can have a sign on the corner under, under five feet.
Exactly. So if this requested to go taller, if we still have that kind of latitude to impose that kind of condition, honestly, I'm asking because I agree that probably having the sign not located right in the corner would help alleviate some of the real concerns, and I think you've done a good job of pointing out, relative to just safety at the intersection. But I'm curious, I, and wondering, yeah, is that...
Can I make one, one point very quickly? The, the amount of sign area that they're allowed increases with the height. So, at five feet, there's a restriction on how, how large the sign area can be. The higher you allow them to go, based on their frontage, there's more that they're allowed. So, so in other words, it's more of a distraction, the size as well, because they're permitted to go, they're asking for the full 25 feet in height, they get to increase the sign area significantly from what they...
They get to increase the sign area significantly from what they would if it was five feet. So, so there are negative impacts that are going along with you approving a 25 foot.
At least the impact is growing, right? Whether that's positive or negative. Yeah.
Mr. Pepperoni.
So to answer Mr. Anderson's question, I would say if the planning commission, a majority of the planning commission agree that a sign at the corner poses a safety issue, then I think the planning commission would have latitude to influence where the sign is located or shifting the sign. I'd be interested in the rational basis behind the 300-foot recommendation from the neighborhood chair.
The, what, what we, when we went down and took a look at the area, what we were looking at was maybe a half block to a block away from the intersection, so that those that are especially making decisions at that intersection, such as turning when there are pedestrians or bicyclists crossing, that that sign is out of their, their vision when they're at the intersection. So, is it arbitrary? To some degree it is, but we were looking for a safer distance and maybe just 10 feet or 20 feet from the intersection.
Do you have any idea of the location of the electronic display sign on the northeast corner of State Street and University Parkway?
By Walgreens?
The one by the mall.
Oh, the one by the mall. That's about 200 feet back from the corner. Of course, that's much larger as well.
Mr. Howard.
I was just going to say, it was a nice presentation. I, personally, I think if you have a sign that's off-center, I think that itself might be a distraction. I, and we are a distracted world. I came to work and, you know, behind someone on one of these. I, I think that if the, if the hospital is willing to shut it off at night, I think that's a, a great compromise that seems to strike a balance here.
Can I also point out, Andrew, in our, in our neighborhood meeting, the representative from the hospital agreed that, that they would be willing to move it back. They didn't agree to this distance, but they did say they'd be willing to move it back. So, so maybe it's worth having that conversation with them, at least because they're willing.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
I have a question on the relativity or what's the, what's the comparison with the signage that's on University Avenue and Bulldog on the southeast corner there. By the, was it a bagel shop?
Fat Cats.
Fat Cats. Isn't there a video sign there as well? I mean, I, I don't think that's 25 feet, but I think it's, I know it's taller than five feet. So I mean, and that's pretty right up on the corner. I, I don't see how, I, I hate to say this, but it's almost like signage like this is the new norm.
It doesn't have to.
It, it doesn't have to be. I agree. It doesn't, but, but it is really. And whether it's, you know, right up in the, in the setback or back, you know, 100 feet or whatever it is, I don't think there's going to be much difference either way, honestly. The, the turn rate, the brightness, those are things that are most distracting. So eight seconds, people are, you know, it's going to take somebody eight seconds to get, you know, they're going to make it all the way through the intersection on a turn before the eight seconds, or they're sitting stationary in their cars at the light. So. Yes. Okay. I mean, that's, that's right up there.
That's much lower.
It's, it's lower, but I mean, it's still there and it's still visible. I don't see what, what the difference is other than height, honestly. So, yeah, in my estimation, I don't think that this is anything that's going to be any more distracting than anything else that we have in, in other places. So.
Can I add something? One difference is the arrangement of the intersection and the roads are not perpendicular there, so when you're coming down State Street, that sign will be directly in front of you.
Also significantly different traffic volumes on University and Bulldog here. We'll defer to your judgment, of course. We're going to take a seat, but we're, we're just asking that you consider that you have the ability to assess this intersection, not all intersections, not all in the future, not all in the past, just this one. And the hospital was amenable to making changes. They, they stated very strongly that they don't want this to be something that the neighborhood doesn't, doesn't like, feels bad about. They want to be a good neighbor. It's worth having the conversation with them, I believe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? If not, I will invite any members of the community who would like to speak to this item. Seeing none, yes, one. And please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Hi, my name is Julia Smoot and I do not live in the neighborhood, but since I'm here on another item, I thought I'd just weigh in. I'm just, as a general driver around the county, I'm, I, I find a sign the size to be distracting. I have to say particularly the one at the corner of the mall and State Street. I find that very distracting as a driver. I'm concerned about the height, so I just wanted to go on record and say less signage, less light pollution would be something that would be a good goal for Provo City. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the community who would like to speak on this item?
Hi, Commissioners. Scott Bowles. I'm in the Franklin neighborhood, not impacted by this, but some experience with large signage. I am the General Manager of the Provo Town Center. Feel for IHC. Understand how important signage is, not just for educating people around, but also for internal branding. I think that neighborhood chairs give a very convincing argument for some of the concerns that have been laid. Concern I have as I was looking at this, if that 300-foot restriction was put in, it was maybe placed on 400 West rather than 500 West. That intersection right now is, is quite developed and looking at light pollution at about 25 feet up, there's really not a whole lot of residential structures in that area, but if you move it down towards 400 West, there's a lot of residential things there. So, very sensitive to the issue of light pollution, but the thing is these signs are very smart. The one we have, after we worked out about two weeks' worth of technical kinks, they measure light constantly. So it's not meant to be bright and blind you. I'm, as was said, I am far more concerned about people having their heads in their apps while they're driving than they are about moving the signage, because even just a little bit further up State Street, right next to Walgreens, there actually is an electronic billboard there. So, as a commission is just also as someone who represents a large business, signage is important. I would just say the diligence and the burden of proof is on IHC to prove why that's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item?
Hi, I'm Aaron Scavon. Actually, I'm a neighborhood chair in the River Grove neighborhood, which is just addition to this, and also I'm a member of the Provo Bicycle Committee as well. So I speak from both of those perspectives. The sign just north of this, which is just outside of our neighborhood by Walgreens, doesn't face the intersection. So I think that's an important difference to note. And as a cyclist in a community that increasingly is, is becoming more bicycle friendly and welcoming to cyclists in its, per its infrastructure with the Bulldog project. And yesterday, we, at a stakeholders meeting, we learned about changes that are coming to 500 West from Center Street, or actually from Third South all the way to Bulldog to this, very intersection. You're going to get a lot more cyclists and I am also very worried about people and their, their, their small screens and distracting them, but if we can find a compromise, as the neighborhood chairs of, of North Park suggested, as a neighborhood chair and also as a representative of the Bicycle Committee, I would encourage you to opt for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item? If not, would the applicant care to address any of the concerns that were expressed earlier?
Thank you. Yeah, if we could have a quick minute. So just as Kirby spoke, and I appreciate the concerns that were brought forth and, and understand, having grown up just a mile away from there as well, the area is changing very quickly. A couple notes that I had taken. The first one is that this is about, as I mentioned before, hitting audiences. And a further setback was mentioned. Obviously, we feel as a hospital and a health system that the more people we can get our message out to, the better. This is not just me blowing smoke, but as recent as two months ago, my wife and I had a friend that was literally saved by driving up I-15 and seeing a billboard about a cancer screening. Went in, got a cancer screening. Two days later, had a hysterectomy because they found something. She was young. She was 25 years old. And so it, it's not just about fluffy messages for us to get out to the community, but we really do feel that these messages are important and the further you set something back, the more difficult it is for people to see. I think that provides its own safety concern. As Jeff and I were back there talking, the, the issue that I feel we would face if it was set back further is that it wouldn't be as visible. So as vehicles went by to view that message, it may be more difficult to view and it may be more difficult for them to focus on, and so they're more distracted in that case than if it was right up at the corner. Another note is that the messaging that we have on these is very simple. You see, I mean, up there is, is just a photo, but our communication team, as mentioned before, has done a very good job of being very succinct in the messaging that they have. There's not a lot of text on these. And, and so I don't think it would be as distracting as other billboards may be. The last point I wanted to make, and then I know Jeff has a few comments as well, is that we do absolutely rely on code to dictate safety. And I think we're well within the code, both with the size of the sign as well as the setback, and so hopefully fulfilling those requirements and also agreeing to a, a shut-off time at night, so it was less distracting is, is a good compromise in this situation.
I was just going to say, I know in the, one of, one of the things that's planned for that corner is, is a lot of, it's going to be still an open parking lot. There's not going to be a structure there. And there's going to be, Intermountain has done a landscaping plan for an open parking area right there. And so they're trying to, I know it's, looks a little rough right now, a lot of construction, but, but it'll be a a well landscaped area and we're going to try to tie that sign into the landscaping and to have one sign that targets, that's properly set back, not creating a problem to, to, to capture those views instead of trying to put maybe two double-faced signs on the, the ends out of a clear, a larger clear view area is, seems just a more practical situation. And the one, I know that there's always, during the neighborhood meetings, everybody kind of talked about University Mall, University Place. And they have 10 by 30 signs down around it, but, and then they have the big, big one on the glass building that's flashing and blinking and showing video, but, but we're talking, our screen that we're asking for is only one-third of the size of one of the smallest ones at University Place. And, and those are the 10 by 30s. So in the way of square footage, we're talking about a third of that. We're only going to be able to have maybe an image and maybe four or five words. And then an eight-second hold time. And it's not going to be moving and there's no video. So it's just going to be a very clean image, a slideshow that changes every eight seconds with a very succinct message. And, and so I, I just want to mention that, that the landscaping and, and one of the things that Kirby mentioned is that there was a discussion about what's the future of, of that whole intersection and Bulldog and, and we said, we don't want to have to move it again either. We, you know, but, so if it required any further setback, I think we were kind of talking about if there, if there was going to be a, some kind of a road widening imminent, that we'd rather just set it back a little further now and not deal with that. But, so really, our intention was to already go back into the planner area, which is at least 13 or 14 feet farther than we need to under your code, just to give it some cush factor and then, and I think we're, we're just trying to abide the setback and we, we, everything that I've talked to about with the Intermountain folks, they want to be good neighbors about it and offering the shut-off time as well at midnight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant from the Commissioners? If not, I'll turn it back over to the Commissioners for discussion and a motion. Mr. Howard.
Well, I think, I think it's been a, a good discussion. You know, I think if you're going to have an electronic sign at the, at that particular intersection, you know, personally, I don't like the bright signs, but if you're going to have one, that's probably a good place to have it because it is a bright lit intersection in and of itself. And if they can work out, and I don't know what those hours would be, but I think if they were to turn it off at night, I think that's a, that's an accommodation that would be helpful to ameliorate the concern. And I'd, I'd move on that if that, if, if you want to take a motion.
I think we have a few more comments.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Ms. Ellsworth.
I just feel like it's really big and I think for as much as we've talked about safety over the last few meetings, especially in regards to, you know, the complete streets policy and how so much of that is driven by safety, that this is just a tremendous distraction to drivers. And I think that's a, a piece of the safety puzzle. I really do. The one that's further down the street is a lot smaller and I would be in favor of finding something closer to that size. I just don't feel like this warrants that, especially at such an unusual intersection. It's such a busy intersection, you know, strangely angled intersection. It's just, it's too much. I think it's really too distracting. And can you flip to the, the one where the sign is next to the different, like, different angles of the intersection? This one. So in the bottom right picture, you can see that the, the sign is on par with those lights, right? Like it's at the same level. And to me, if I'm sitting there and looking at the sign, I'm not looking at the lights. I think it's too tall.
Thank you. Mr. Rowan.
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly appreciate the, what sounds like a very strong willingness to accommodate and a compromise from the hos, from the, on the hospital's behalf. I mean, it certainly seems like they've been kind of model partners to work with in terms of interacting with the neighborhood and, and making all sorts of concessions. And I understand that these signs are, you know, how people have been allowed to do business to some degree and, but I, I don't, you know, there's also, the, the thing that we haven't talked about at all is just the aesthetics of, of our city. And I wish we didn't have any of those other signs. I mean, I, so, so to, to, to continue to approve these signs just because we've had signs in the past. Now, I, I know that, that we can't disapprove a sign, but what we are approving is will we allow that to be 25 feet high and, and therefore also bigger or, or not? And I'm, I'm just, you know, I hate to make IHC the one that, you know, is, where I make, not I, you know, because this is a, this is a commission, but for me, it's like, I'm, I don't want, I don't want these kinds of signs. So, I don't want big signs up on, up on 25-foot pedestals if they have to have a sign and can find a way to put it on the ground and, you know, we don't have much control over that, but that's just where I'm, I'm coming from.
Thank you. I will add that I appreciated Kirby's presentation about the safety issue and I would find that this is a very large sign for the context it's in. And we, we know Bulldog's been redesigned because it is the most dangerous street in Provo. There's the most fatalities and accidents on Bulldog. I avoid it for that reason. And so if you're a business owner on Bulldog, I'm probably not going to your store because I don't want to drive on it. I think perhaps a compromise solution would be to place one sign on, on Bulldog, a smaller sign, and if you want the visibility on State Street too, put a smaller sign on State Street. I mean, that's one thing you could do. But I, I do not think it's in the best interest of public safety to put a big billboard sign right on the corner like that. And I too appreciate that the hospital's willing to work with us on this, that they're willing to dim it or turn it off after hours so that we don't have significant light pollution, because these signs, I, I find them extremely annoying, quite honestly. Especially if you're driving on I-15, some of those signs are almost blinding, especially in the rain or, I, I think that they're not a good idea at a high-impact intersection such as this. That's my opinion. Mr. Smith.
I drive through this intersection multiple times, almost every day, and I can count on maybe two hands the time that I've been able to drive straight through that intersection without having to stop going any direction. I think that we're making a lot of the danger to pedestrians and bicycles. You take a, the size of a sign that large and put it down on the ground, you're blocking more. you're blocking more view than if you lift it up and you've got a smaller pedestal that it's sitting on, it, it increases your visibility. Um, I also drive through, uh, State Street and University Parkway frequently and, uh, I can count the times on one finger that I've ever looked at that sign that's up on that glass building in the mall. Uh, I just don't look at it. I don't need to. It's not, it's not, maybe it's not for me. But, um, I, I don't see this as a bad thing. There's going to be a sign there, whether it's on the ground or whether it's up in the air. I think it's less distracting if it's up in the air, you can see around it, you can get through it. I don't think it's, uh, any more of a danger than people already staring at their phones as they're driving through. Um, I, I appreciate the information that's put out. Uh, IHC has a lot of programs, uh, for local, uh, kids and, and families that, that is very important. And, um, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion now and we can vote, uh, we can continue discussion after the motion. But I would make a motion that we recommend, or that we approve the requested conditional use permit, um, going up to 25 feet not to exceed and following the conditions as listed, um, adding a fourth condition that the sign be turned off at midnight.
I'll second.
Can I ask a clarifying question to that motion? At what time would we want to permit the sign being turned on?
Six. I think that's a good question.
Or at, you know, 12:30, you know, a half hour later.
I was thinking 11 to six, that's what came to my head.
Midnight to six makes sense and I'd be happy to add that to the motion.
Do we have a second for this motion?
Second as amended.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. All those in favor of approving item three?
It sounds like there's more discussion still.
Can I just ask a, a question really quickly of staff? Um, just to make, I, I think I understand this based on the information you've given us earlier. To deny this, uh, or to, 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 yeah, to deny this motion would not be to put ourselves in legal jeopardy. We would just be denying the, the special conditions.
Height increase.
The height increase, right? I mean, we're not voting on whether they can have a sign here or not. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
That's right. You're not voting on whether or not they can have a sign, but you're voting on whether or not they can have a conditional use permit for what they've requested.
Right.
A conditional use permit, there's a presumption for approval unless there cannot be mitigating conditions put onto it. And I would just point out also that, um, to Ms., uh, Johnson's point, these types of signs aren't allowed down 500 West. They're only allowed on Bulldog. So the idea to put one on each street, you couldn't do a display sign on State Street.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Are we ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Item three.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, and maybe Madam Chair? To clarify, I, I appreciated the way that Commissioner Ellsworth described her thoughts just about the, the size and perhaps being able to, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but if possible, scale back what I think really is a, a real distraction and something that's worth, worth attempting to address. I don't have, you know, what that magic dimension might be, whether it's a height or an area, irrelative to the signage in my head. Um, but, uh, I'd love to discuss that rather than going all the way back down to five feet. I do think that's probably.
Yeah.
Um, like there's, there's some room in there for something else.
So do we want to make a revised motion?
As colleagues, do any of you guys have any, any thoughts or ideas as to what might be more suitable?
I would, I'm no pro. I would, uh, defer to the, the, the sign company to come up and say what maybe a differing size would be.
I like the one that's further down on Bulldog. I mean, if we have to have one, not that I like it, I think it's kind of, it's, I mean, it's right, the aesthetic isn't great, but, um, the one further down is a lot more palatable. The one by what Fat Cats or Cafe Rio or something.
So are we going to stand with the motion that we've just voted on? Or do we want to propose a, a, another motion in its stead?
Can, can, uh, we lower the height to 20 feet? Would that change the d- dimensions of the sign down and would that be acceptable to the?
I think the Intermountain Healthcare should work with staff on something more reasonable and then bring it back to us instead of us making up a number.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like I'm in a position to.
I would agree.
I just wanted to, my vote was to deny and then if they want to come back again, then that's fine.
So that's four opposed to approval and two in favor of approval.
Died.
So item three does not.
So another option too is that you continue it with those, uh, directions to staff to, to come back, uh, work with the applicant and have them come back with a alternative proposal if that's kind of what we're, I think we're hearing, is that?
That way the applicant doesn't have to pay a new application fee and get in line all over again.
Great.
There's some, there's some procedure.
If you, if you recommend that, then shall we vote on whether to continue this item?
Do we need a motion to that effect?
It's.
And I'll go ahead and move that we continue item number three.
The item's already been, I mean, there's already been a motion.
We don't need to go through.
So that one's done. So it's dead. If we want to bring it back up again, we can do that and then make a new motion.
Isn't that what you're doing?
That's my attempt is to formally.
I'll second that motion.
Continue that item.
Did somebody second that? Andrew seconded it.
Do we have a second to continue?
Andrew.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
All those in favor of continuing item three?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will forward unanimous, um, continue on item three. All right, item four. Kenneth Agile, Kenneth Agile requests conditional use approvals SLU 7210, 7396, and 7212 to allow for the exhibition of motion pictures, a dance hall, and theatrical productions for property located at 501, sorry, 591, South 300 West in the interim transit-oriented development or I-TOD zone. And this has impact on the Franklin neighborhood. Josh Yost will present.
Thank you. First, uh, as we've gone through this process, uh, with feedback to the applicant and iterating through the options that they have at this location, the applicant has amended their request, uh, to solely use, uh, use number 7214, which is a sub-use of 7212, or of 7210, uh, that is legitimate theater, that's what it's called, uh, to limit their request just to theater uses, not the, uh, motion pictures or dance hall. So it would just be for theatrical productions. The applicant has provided, uh, information regarding their use of the property, the size of the space they're occupying and the times which they'll be conducting, uh, their theatrical uses. Uh, they're using approximately the west three, uh, two-fifths of this building and accessing it off of the west elevation as seen here on the right. After reviewing this and considering the unique aspects of the neighborhood and the potential impacts from these use, staff recommends to you that, uh, the conditional use permit be approved with these four conditions. The first being seating shall be limited to 112. Uh, that number is derived from the parking requirement in this area for theater, uh, actually for a movie theater and applying that to the number of stalls present on the site. Two, the use shall only operate after 6:00 PM when the, uh, that should read onsite, I'm sorry, when the onsite parking becomes available for the sole use of the theater. And three, a conditional use permit's being granted subject to the theater providing sufficient off-street parking. Patron parking in excess of provided onsite parking may be grounds for revocation of the conditional use permit. And four, the applicant shall resolve any outstanding departmental review comments. So with those conditions, I recommend, uh, approval of this item. I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Suppose most of the customers are going to come from the neighborhood? Is that the idea?
I, I would not anticipate that, no. I mean, it's hard to.
Hard to know, huh?
I mean, it's a, it's a cultural use. I'm sure it would have a pretty wide geographical draw.
Any other questions for Mr. Yost?
So the anticipated use, is that more of an instructional kind of a, am I miss?
No, it, it's a theatrical production use.
Okay, so shows on some schedule?
Right.
Okay.
They're a, they're a theater development group essentially. They provide a space for, uh, the development of new theatrical works. Uh, they can, the applicant is here and can explain a little more about their business and their mission to you, but.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, I'll invite the applicant to present his project, Richard Heftel.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Agel and it's my brother Dennis Agel. And, uh, we are the applicants and this is for a theater, um, a stage production theater in an effort to develop new, uh, plays that might be available for audience members to come see. This is a very small area, very small development, but of course, we're hoping to reach not only beyond the community, but also of course, within the community. It's kind of a, a new and upcoming area in terms of, uh, the front-runner station being there with all of the capacity to come to that area. Our project is designed to build on uplifting, uh, new products, new theatrical works, uh, something that we've been part of, uh, our efforts over the last 15 years here in Provo. Anything else?
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I don't know if I know much about it, but I, I've been down and driven by the building. I think it would be nice to revitalize that area of town and if anything you could do to help, uh, boost it, might be, might be a good thing.
We think so too. We think that that area, to us, it's a, there's the food truck roundup, uh, that happens there and, you know, after you've had a, a great meal at the food truck roundup, you're looking for something to do. Well, we have a, it's a small theater, we anticipate 80 seats, so quite small, but yet we're hoping that the entertainment is very positively received.
Do you hire casts to come and put on plays or do you have, are they in-house? Are they from?
They'll be from the local area. There's a lot of talent in this area that we feel is, uh, very capable of providing top-class entertainment.
And, uh, how many productions do you plan to do per month, year? What, what, any idea?
Well, our hope is to do a production one a month. So, you know, we're talking, we have a production schedule that we hope will rotate new entertainment, new ideas. Uh, we hope to have, uh, pull new ideas from all over the country, but most of the theme that we tend to focus on is innovation, but yet very, uh, centered on optimism and uplift. Um, it's kind of what we've done in the past and what we feel is important.
Can, can you make it go with 112 seats?
I was, I was just going to clarify, um, when Ken says one production a month, it's like one show but running multiple nights during.
Right, so it's different, different, uh, program, I guess, every month or so. So 12 maybe, but nightly, nightly performances from six to nine, 10?
They'd probably start at seven and end at nine, but that's the idea, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Um, should maybe a little bit of math help? So 21 available stalls on-site, basically, right? Okay. 112 seats. The idea that the applicant's going to limit their occupancy based on the available parking, is that, is that kind of the concept?
Yes, that's essentially the intent of condition number three, that you can seat 112 people, but if the parking for that exceeds your capacity and it starts to become an issue in the neighborhood, then that could be grounds for reviewing the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Because although the parking, uh, the required parking stalls in that area would permit, or that parking base, uh, minimum parking requirement for that use in that area would permit 112 seats, uh, it may not always be feasible to fill all the seats with the parking, you know, depending on how people arrive and any variables like that. So that's why that number three clause is there, because we've received comments from neighbors and are aware of the impact that other uses in the neighborhood have to on-street parking throughout that area on many nights a week.
Okay. So if, well, let me ask this first. The 25% parking requirement reduction, how does that come about? How do they qualify for that?
That's by right in the area.
So it's just, and that's based on their geographic location in the city?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Um, so should, I'm sorry.
The I-TOD zone and the downtown zones give you a 25% reduction by right.
Okay. Uh, so if the parking does become a problem, then they just are required to sell fewer tickets? Is that kind of the idea? Is that the?
We would, at that time, determine how to remedy that impact to bring the use back into compliance with the approved conditions.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I guess for the applicants then, I mean, what's, what is your plan B? If parking does become a problem, um, how would you anticipate dealing with that?
One of the advantages I think we have is the access location next to front-runner. We're pretty confident that a lot of people will take advantage of that, plus the new bus lines that are coming in. Uh, I, I heard an individual talk about bicycling. I think it's becoming a much more common thing for people to, uh, want to have a, an evening where they're taking advantage of the development in that area. And I think you'll, we also know that there's a little more than 21 spaces, but I think that's the official number in our location.
I saw 29 listed someplace that's one thing.
So it's configured at 21 for this particular purpose, but there's actually 29 spaces there.
Okay. It's just kind of hard to take a family to a production on the 15th of January at 7:00 at night, you know, on bikes or that kind of a thing, so.
Well, I'd also point out that really we're looking at around 80 seats in our location, so that would configure down even further. We feel like we can accommodate quite well within our parking. Certainly are very sensitive to that issue. We live, work in that area, we know about the issue. We want to make sure that that's not something that is negative, certainly in the community. We want to be a strong community partner.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item. Please come forward and state your name and affiliation.
My name's Terry McCabe and I'm the Franklin Neighborhood Chair. Um, we're actually really excited about this. It's a great, um, small venue for new productions and actually some of the neighborhood kids want to be in it, so, yeah. You know, there's actually plenty of parking that, the parking issue is actually for white shanty, which is down the street. And, um, it, like they said, it's next to front-runner and, uh, walkability from the food truck roundup. We love it like that. Um, the opportunities for the playwrights to workshop their work, this is, this is great. Um, also, I don't know if this would be allowed under the conditional use, but with what's going on with meeting spaces for neighborhood meetings, this would be a great place to have it. If there's a, we need to have an alternate, um, site. And, and I don't know, who said they drove down? Yeah, like from my house to go to front-runner, I walked by this building when it was going through its transformation. You should have seen the dump it used to be. And now it's so nice and they've just made it a really nice, uh, place to do business. So, yeah, we like it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for? Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay.
Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? If not, are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will turn it back over to the commissioners for discussion and/or motion. Mr. Rowan?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the requested conditional use permit for use 7214 legitimate theaters with, uh, the condition, the conditions noted in the staff report that we can see on the, on the screen there. with the conditions noted in the staff report that we can see on the, on the screen there. And, yeah, I think that's the end of my...
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor of approval, the conditional use permit, item four?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, so, so approved, and that was unanimous. Next item is item five. Scott Bowles requests project plan approval for two out parcel structures located at approximately twelve-eighty-eight South University Avenue in the regional shopping center, SC-three zone, East Bay neighborhood, section seventeen dash oh-oh-three-three PPA. And Aaron Ardmore will present this item.
Okay, thank you. First, there's a couple of things I'd like to note before I get into the details of the proposal. The first is that this item was noticed with a star next to it indicating that it needed council approval. That's not the case, that's been fixed in the slides, but it wasn't fixed on year.
Okay.
Noticing that went to the paper or to the neighborhood. So just want to make that clear that the decision is here. And another thing, as we get into this, as, when the application came in, it included this parcel. So originally, the proposal had two projects, two different commercial buildings. Through the departmental review process, the applicant decided to just move forward with the one for now. And he would be coming back with another if that pans out in the future. So moving forward, we've got just the one building here, just east of the new Marriott Hotel? Yeah, Marriott Hotel. And it's, it has space for four shops. How those are leased out, you know, that's up to the applicant. And some of the things that staff enjoyed was that, you know, they're meeting the parking standards, they're meeting the landscaping standards for the site. But that it also incorporates walking into the Marriott Hotel and eventually would be connecting with the other shops over here and hopefully up to the mall as well. So trying to create a more walkable area where you don't have to park your car at the mall and then get in your car and drive down here to eat at this shop or, or whatever. So there are some positive aspects to the proposal that staff enjoyed. Down to the numbers, it consists of eighty-three parking stalls, which would be enough for the type of uses that would go into the building. Like I said, it meets the parking lot standards for landscaping. And it has gone through the review committee. All the different divisions have given approval on this item as it moves forward. And staff recommends approval. So I'll take any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mr. Ardmore? Mr. Smith?
Chair. The question I have is about, it looks like there's a drive-through there on the, on the south end. Doesn't look like there's anything stipulation that would prevent that. There's not any immediate neighbors, I mean, other than the patrons of the hotel in the future. But it's like the lights are going south and then east, so, any issues with that at all?
No, they have the, the needed stacking space for the drive-through. It's permitted in the zone, so, no issues there.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Pylon sign on the site plan, is that proposed to be digital? Do you know how big that's gonna be?
Haven't seen plans for that. We only have elevations of the building at this point, so.
I assume by right, they can have?
To be determined, yeah. Yeah, on University Ave, you can have electronic.
Twenty-five feet, what, do you know?
I'd have to get back to you on the height.
I'm kind of serious, I wasn't totally making fun.
Yeah, so that will, that will come in for review once they're ready for that.
And my only question is the setback from University Avenue. Is that about thirty feet?
Um, let's go back to the site plan.
And does the code, I, I'm presuming the code requires that setback rather than pulling the building forward and parking behind?
It doesn't require a ninety-foot setback for the building, but there's no maximum in this zone like there would be in a downtown zone. That's obviously what they've chosen, so they could put parking up front. It's pretty typical in East Bay and, and this area. But they do have the, the twenty-foot landscape buffer, which helps buffer the parking from the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I would like to invite the applicant, BC Development Land, Elsie.
Hello, Commissioners. Scott Bowles, General Manager of the Provo Town Center. And with me, I have Mr. PJ Perelwich with Bricks and Capital. He's the Vice President of Construction, so we'll be happy to take any questions that you have for us.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Anderson?
Tenants, who's gonna be in the building?
Exactly.
You'll see. If you give us approval, you will see. Yeah, we, obviously, we can't discuss who we're talking to, but we, yeah. But we are in discussions with people. But if, if I can, Commissioner Smith, you were requesting some information about when the cars are going south and they're stacking. Good thing is where those lights will hit. If you look at the neighboring, you know, pad site that's there, there's no windows there. It's just the side of that T-Mobile, so it shouldn't impact anybody with lighting, nor will it hit anywhere on the, on the hotel.
My only other question is, is to Mr. Rowan's point, is just because we've done, done it some, one way, why continue? If we had to redo East Bay all over again, I imagine we might pull all the shops up to the street and park in the back. And so was there any discussion on that, to be different or start the trend? Who knows how much of East Bay will be rebuilt in the next twenty years? And, and maybe it's better to pull it up to the front and park in the back.
You know, hindsight's twenty-twenty. If I could go back twenty years from now, actually, about twenty-three and a half years, I would take the mall and I'd turn a hundred and eighty degrees and have the main entrance facing the interstate.
Yeah.
Not facing inward, you know. And, and that's a good point, but I would look at it as, one of the greatest standards of appraisal in real estate is continuity, right? Even if the continuity is not what we like right now, it still provides continuity now to what's surrounding it. So, and the way I look at it, to play devil's advocate, is for us to do that, then we'd have a drive-through that's right up against University Avenue. Now you have lights going down either side. So I see, I see both of your points, but the, the good thing is, is that Bricks and Capital does use a very good architecture firm who's come here onsite numerous times, looked at every conceivable angle. This has gone through multiple drafts to try to meet needs of the area and look at what's gonna be the best impact for the longest period of time.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to invite any neighborhood chairs who are present who would like to speak to this item. Seeing none, any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? All right, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for discussion and/or a motion. And again, we will be approving or disapproving this item.
I'll just say that I'm glad to see this. I travel a lot, and the more often I can walk out of my hotel and hit, you know, ten different areas, whether it's food or shopping or other things, it's fantastic. So adding more around the hotels that are there, I think is a great thing. And I'll make a motion. So I'll, I'll move that we approve the, the project as proposed.
And do we have a second for that motion?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor of approval of item five?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item five is approved unanimously. Right, item six, McKay Christensen requests project plan approval for a residential and commercial building located at the northeast corner of one hundred East and Center Street in the general downtown DT-one zone. This affects the downtown neighborhood, and will be presented by Mr. Wright.
All right, thank you. So here's the proposed site for this mixed-use project. It's located on the corner of one hundred East and Center Street. The project is proposed to have a hundred and thirty-six residential units and commercial of approximately, or commercial office of approximately eighty-nine hundred square feet at this site. Here's a close-up of the site plan with the commercial outlined there in red at the street level and parking on the, on the inside of that. So it's, so the parking structure would be wrapped by the commercial and the, on the second level where the parking garage goes up, that would be wrapped by the residential. The entrance into that is on one hundred East through this area here. Within that area on the site, there's an existing easement access that's there. And as part of planning commission's approval, it's, this, there's a concern from the neighboring property to the east over here, this, this property here, and that access easement. This project, the planning commission is just reviewing to ensure that it meets the requirements that are within the, the code as far as the project goes. And so what that access is or isn't is a private issue that the two property owners need to work out. And it's not something that the planning commission is gonna determine what that is or isn't. So moving forward, here's a elevation of the proposed project, a six-story structure. Like I said, the retail commercial located on the ground floor, and then up above that would be the residential units. The, here's the other elevations from the, looking at the backside and the side that faces the adjacent property. Some elevation renderings of what that would look like. And I'll get into, talk about the parking for the site. So the residential portion of the parking for the site, the applicant is requesting the transportation demand management program that's allowed in that downtown zone. We talked about that two, two weeks ago at the study meeting that we had with the planning commission. And I'll just kind of go through that again. But basically, the request there is to have the parking spaces required for this project to be able to be reduced if they provide certain elements that will help reduce the parking demand for the project. And so the current requirement without the reduction would be a hundred and sixty-four parking stalls. With the TDM being granted, it would reduce that down to a hundred and forty-one, which is a twenty-three parking stall reduction. As part of that, one of, some of the elements, I'll kind of go through those. One of them is to have a commercial bike storage and tune-up station located down in the corner there on one hundred East. And so that'd be a site where twenty-two bike stalls would be located and a place where they could fix and wash and, and kind of maintain their bikes. Then another thing that they're proposing would be scooter parking. So on different levels throughout there, there's some areas where they've designated that for scooter parking. The next element would be tandem parking stalls. So the stall in the front would count towards their required parking, but the tandem stall that's located back behind it, so here's the one that would just be required. But this one is an additional space. And so they're proposing to have twenty-six of those throughout the parking garage to help, to help residential units that might have more than one car, they could share those tandem spaces. The next one would be bike storage within each unit. So all hundred and thirty-six units would have bike racks that they could hang their bike in the actual unit as opposed to parking them out on the street or in that parking, bike parking structure. And so here's some renderings that show what that could look like. So overall, here's kind of a breakdown of what they'd be proposing as far as elements to, to meet that TDM. And the planning commission tonight, part of your recommendation of approval would, would need to include a condition to approve either this or something else as far as a TDM goes to get them to be able to meet the parking requirement. Without the TDM being granted by the planning commission, then they would not be meeting their parking requirement. So I guess we'll get into some of the conditions for approval would be that they combine the parcels that are existing there, that they are combined into one parcel, that the bonds and fees are played, paid prior to the billing permit being issued, that the planning commission review and approve the TDM agreement, and that that gets recorded to run with the property. The commercial parking would be located in the Wells Fargo parking structure across the street. As they've worked out an agreement with the redevelopment agency to do that. So that would need to be recorded to run with the property as well. And that the access easement that they work out with the adjacent property owner, like I said on that one, just kind of a reminder that that's something that, it's, it's a access easement that's there. What it exactly is, is kind of between them to work that out. It doesn't grant the applicant permission to not have to provide it, or it doesn't give the adjacent property owner recourse, I guess, to, to hold this up. It's something that they need to work through. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Wright? Mr. Smith?
I do have one, and not directly related to this, but the parking, would this do anything to the parking that's out on Center Street right now, the awkward stalls that are right there, right in the middle of the road?
That's a good question.
Could, would those, could those go away? Will they stay there? Will they increase? Do we know?
Yeah, let me, sorry.
Yeah, that, you see the diagonally parked cars right down the middle of the road there?
Okay, yeah, so those down the middle of Center Street will remain. There's gonna be, the city's gonna look at some modifications there to help improve that, but those, those stalls will stay there. Angled parking will go in, in front of the, so just right here on this side of the street, there'll be some angled parking stalls. And then along one hundred East, there's gonna be perpendicular stalls. And in the future, there'll be potential to do angled parking as well.
When I say it's awkward, it's awkward in that there's no real drive-up. There's no curbing or anything like that. And so people are parked all kinds of lengths. Yeah.
To organize it so you can't pull through it the way you do.
Right. Yeah, that's the scariest part of that, driving up and down Center Street is, I mean, it's a great traffic calmer. It makes me slow down to about five miles an hour, because I'm afraid I'm gonna get, you know, broadsided. But I think there's things we can do there. Yeah, not really related. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? Mr. Anderson?
Pretty straightforward, the sidewalk on Center Street looks like it's fairly wide. How wide?
So I believe the sidewalk on Center Street would be eight feet wide. And then there'll be an amenity space where the parks, where the, kind of what you'd call the park strip, where the trees and whatever, whatever other amenities could go out in that space, whether it's outdoor dining or things like that. So part of our downtown, street standards, or streetscape standards are, are being met there to, to ensure that there's adequate amenity space, sidewalk and, and things like that there. So we've worked with them to, to meet all those. So we've worked with them to meet all those design standards that are kind of a newer addition that we have in our downtown.
I was hopeful from one of the images that it was more than eight feet on Center Street. Do you know what on First East, the width of the sidewalk is?
I believe it's six feet on First East.
Okay. An eight-foot sidewalk, if you're going to do any kind of outdoor seating, people aren't going to, that's not a pedestrian place then.
Yeah, and also adjacent to the building is a transitional space of approximately two feet too. So that kind of adds into that space as well. So it kind of widens the street, so to speak. And that's where, you know, some of those A-frame signs or things like that could be placed in those locations.
So I guess maybe my questions are more of a commentary on a concern about our efforts to create places for pedestrians to spend time when we're not designing for that, when we have a great opportunity to do it. And certainly a six-foot sidewalk in that kind of an environment, I'm used to six-foot sidewalks in suburbia. So honestly, that's disappointing. That's mine.
This is the first project that would incorporate a TDM as proposed?
Correct.
This is kind of a, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? If not, I'll invite McKay Christensen to present the project.
Dustin's done a good job, I think, of explaining what the project is. To add a little bit more information, we've got just under 10,000 square feet of retail that we're going to be adding. To your point, we do have, we will likely have along Center Street, roll-up garage doors. The idea with our retail is that we want it, particularly for our dining, to be an indoor and outdoor experience. And so you've seen like those kind of, I don't know if you've seen, they've got roll-up garage doors. You also have those accordion-type doors that can open up and so the indoor space becomes the outdoor space. I know that that's probably not exactly what you're talking about, but we're trying to achieve that same type of atmosphere.
Honestly, I think that is exactly what, what makes the most sense for that kind of an environment. I just simply think to do it right, it requires more space.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing that we're adding is we are adding, I want to say maybe eight stalls along Center Street, and I think we've got maybe another seven stalls along 100 East that we're adding. With the option of, as the road 100 East widens, I think in the future, we may pick up another, another four stalls. But do you have any questions regarding any of the, oh, one thing that I did want to point out on the TDM, we have a reduction of about 23 stalls according to that TDM, but we're adding 26 tandems. And so really, if you were able to count the tandems, which I know Provo doesn't, cities like Pleasant Grove and others do, but we're actually plus three. So that with the bicycles and everything else, I mean, I think that we're, we're doing a pretty good job meeting parking requirements and providing alternative sources of travel.
Any questions for Mr. Christensen? Mr. Anderson?
On what was mentioned about the agreement to use parking at the Wells Fargo building?
Uh-huh.
Can you share any more details on that in terms of maybe number and duration and?
Yeah, yeah. In fact, Dave and I, Walter, have been working through that as well as the mayor's office. And I think that we're pretty close. We actually are looking to get around, I think, 57 total stalls. And it's important for us because it's important for the retailers, particularly restaurants. And we will have, you know, some way of, you know, we, I know that this is probably a discussion in downtown Provo about educating people to park in parking structures and then walk down into the surrounding shops. And I think that people are getting much, much better at that. I do that all the time behind the Wells, or behind the like Rockwell and all that kind of stuff. I park back there when I can't find something. And so, you know, we would like to have a valet service that operates out in front. So we could have cars pull up along the curb, you know, for restaurants there and just shuttle people back and forth to the stalls that are dedicated. And that's what we're negotiating with the city is that we have actual dedicated stalls so we could just, you know, if it's possible, we could just take people back and forth and just, and try to take the brain damage out of it. And, but as far as the, as far as that agreement goes, what we've been talking about right now is that, I can't remember what the length of it is, but we are paying to lease those stalls.
Okay. Length, we're talking probably decades, right?
Yeah.
Long-term.
Yeah, it will be a lot, for sure. Yeah, we've got to have a long-term arrangement so we have long-term, we got tenants that can lease there.
Okay. I, I don't really want to get into this. We talked a little bit a couple of weeks ago in a work session about the, the transportation demand management program. And if I understand right, this is our first, first one of those. And I, I'm going to struggle to make this sound like I'm not taking a pot shot, so I'm just going to be as direct as I can. I don't, I don't necessarily believe that this is going to be parking deficient, particularly if you have some 50 stalls in close proximity that people can use. I think, I'm inclined to think that we're approaching something that will have a li, high likelihood of working, which I think is, is my concern, so we're making sure that people that live here.
Sure.
You know, that there's a certain level of functionality to it. But I guess to that point, from my perspective, that kind of an approach to where we're saying if you can do a study, and I'm, I may be using phrases that aren't appropriate given what this is intended to, to really work like, but if you can study a particular situation and prove that a parking reduction is warranted, then the city can grant it and we move on that way. You know, maybe by looking at other projects and seeing what their real demand is, understanding maybe we don't have a lot of these, but perhaps look in other communities.
Exactly.
To where there's more science applied to trying to get at what that real needed number is instead of maybe just what we have in our city code inherently. But I'm really concerned at the idea that we're starting off on this approach using some of the logic like assuming that people are going to, for example, spend money in a certain way, or even assuming that they're going to seek employment in a certain location and therefore be able to utilize transit, assuming different things that I think it's at best a wild guess. So again, that's maybe more a concern that I have with sort of the logic that, that we're reviewing here and maybe less to the reality. I mean, the idea of tandem parking, that's kind of unique, but certainly that has the potential at least to help, you know, address a deficiency if there is one. So maybe, maybe the next time around, if we could just look at it a little bit differently, at least that would, would make me more comfortable, so.
Yeah, and we, and to that point, we, the actual change in the code which allows this TDM program, which initiated the TDM program, was a process that, that I worked with Planning Commission on probably a year ago, or not Planning Commission, but with staff on over a year ago, and was eventually a text amendment that was, was approved by Planning Commission and City Council. And during that time, we did, we came up with pretty exhaustive data on why it is in certain locations. I mean, it's a combination of demographics and location and trends. And so, you know, we have specifically catered this development to a very, very specific demographic. You know, we've talked about this before, how we're going after newlyweds, postgraduate students and people that don't have children. And so for a lot of newlyweds who are cost-constrained on their rent, they're willing to pay, you know, when I say they're cost-constrained, their rent is fixed, but they're willing to take a little bit less space if they are in a location where they can walk to work, where they can take a bus to work, where they can, you know, get some form of public transportation, if they can ride their bike to work or to school or something like that. And what we're finding particularly with millennials is that they are willing to save on a car so they can, if they're living in an environment where they can walk to work, walk to school and walk to eat. And then, you know, they've got one spouse that uses the car all day while they go to and from. And it's a little bit different generation. It's not one that, you know, I grew up with or you probably grew up with, but they're different in their mindset. And they save money on things for travel and other stuff that they enjoy doing. And so I think the proximity to this new BRT station is a huge blessing. I think that running that right down Center Street is, is wonderful for this project because it's less than a block away that you can walk to a stop. With all of the office space that is going in, PEG Development has 175,000 square feet, I think that they've got planned coming in. It's just a lot of new employment opportunities that are happening downtown. And, and we see this, and not just us, but other people are seeing the change in environment that's going on in downtown Provo. And it's why, you know, we believe that this TDM program will work and can work because it's just a different demographic in a changing environment. And then, you know, again, I know I mentioned this before, but we're, you know, we're, the reduction, I guess, it includes 23, but we're adding those, you know, 26 tandem stalls. So you have them there.
Yeah.
And like we've talked about before, ideally for those two-bedroom, for the few two-bedroom units that we have, they'll be specifically allocated to those. And so, you know, they can use those.
So what you just described is what I would expect to see in the study in terms of looking at demographics and different trends.
Right.
And, you know, maybe really looking at where people in downtown Provo work today, you know, if there is indeed employment that, that makes it so people can live, you know, maybe a two-person household, but with one vehicle and some of those kinds of things. I think that, I mean, that's empirical. We can touch it, we can feel it, it's real, there's some track record there. We should be able to rely on that even though trends are changing and certainly millennials living the way they do today probably is not going to be the norm forever and no guarantee that Generation Z is going to operate the same way and some different things like that. But I've said enough, but I, you're, you're making the big bet. And we, as a community, we just have to make sure that it
Totally got it.
Works and doesn't adversely impact everything else that we have going on downtown. So I appreciate you talking it through that way.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith?
I was just going to say you ought to offer a new skin discount for employees. I know there's probably a couple of dozen that would just move right in there right now and they fit the exact mold that you were describing, so.
Mr. Rowan?
I don't know if it's worth following up on Mr. Anderson's comment about sidewalks, but I'd be interested in hearing just more, a little bit more background about kind of what went into those decisions. And I mean, it seems that you have, you share the same vision as, as Mr. Anderson articulated, but you have slightly different ideas about what the sidewalk should, should look like in order to make that vision work. I mean, I, I tend to come down on, on his side that a wider sidewalk would, would make your vision work much better than the, you know, the narrow sidewalk that's there. So tell us a little bit more about why you came down where you did on that.
No, I, I'm happy to. We spent a lot of time working with planning and engineering on this intersection, a lot of time going back and forth. And we meet all of the code requirements the way that it's designed right now. One of the key, what I would call constraints or drivers is the parking. Retail is a funny animal. I can go to them and say, hey, we're going to provide X amount of stalls over here and you're going to have plenty of parking over at the Wells Fargo parking structure, but they always want the token stalls that are literally right in front of their, of their store. That's just the way that they operate. It's why if you were to go up to the outlet mall, you would see Polo and Nike that are out on the very front because they want people to park right in front of their store. And so that's as important to my tenants, to bringing a tenant in. In fact, it's more important in terms of capturing a tenant as it would be to creating an atmosphere. And so what we want to do in order to create an atmosphere, a good example may be a place like Boneyard up in Park City. I don't know if you've ever seen or heard of that place or like, there's a couple places on Main Street in downtown Salt Lake where they literally open up their doors and it become, that becomes, and you put a little rail out in front and it becomes this indoor-outdoor experience. And it still has a great, great feel, but allows us to be able to accomplish both. And that's what we, that's what ultimately drove it to that eight-foot sidewalk. And then you have that two-foot space, so really it's about 10 feet or so, plus the amenity space, which I think maybe is five or six feet. But it's those two things that were driving the decision.
Thanks.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, Ms. Ellsworth, sorry. One more question?
No, we can save for discussion.
Okay. Thank you. All right, are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? If not, are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? And please state your name and location for the record.
My name is Ron Smith. And if you look at the top of that proposed building, there's a house there and that's my house. And I'm going to have six stories of shade blocking my house. It's going to take away my view. It's going to be harder to remove the snow in the wintertime. People are going to be looking down into my backyard. My wife has lived in that house her whole life. Her grandfather built that house and the one that's just south of that, which is now owned by John Payne or did, was owned by John Payne. McKay is right, as far as the parking is concerned, you cannot park on First East during lunch or dinnertime. And every time you block Center Street, you get a parade of cars going down First East because they have nowhere, where else to go and you cannot get out of your driveway at that period of time. So yes, I realize I'm the only resident on that house, but you're taking away my, my lifestyle, my life and the history of my, my wife's family.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Please state your name for the record.
My name's Peter Haradine. I'm the Vice President for Harmon Property Management Group. And we own the property directly to the east of this proposed development. Some of you may be familiar with Harmon House, Studio Apartment Building. When we developed that property, it was office space, three stories. It's a classic historic architecture built in the 1920s. Beautiful building. We came in and saw some potential there. We really liked that property and we decided to renovate the property as opposed to knocking it down and starting anew, which would probably have been cheaper to do it that way. But we decided we wanted to keep the historic nature of that building. We even shipped in brick from, from across the country to match up with the existing brick when we did the addition on the back of that property. So we're committed to downtown Provo. We love, we love the area. We love the developments that are going on. We love the historic feel of downtown Provo and, and we're glad to be, be a part of that ourselves. We do have some serious issues with this proposed development. We've talked about the park and there are serious parking issues. Let me point out, I've been the President of the Utah Apartment Association for two years. I serve with the National Board for the National Apartment Association and you cannot discriminate against families. Familial status is a protected class. So trying to guarantee that you only have one individual in these units, that's illegal. In a one-bedroom unit, you can have up to three individuals in that unit. In a two-bedroom unit, you can have up to five individuals in that unit. Parking will be a serious issue. There's already limited parking proposed, then trying to adjust it down even more, I think it's going to fill up the neighborhoods and the streets and we're going to see some problems there. It's true, these streets, 100 East and Center Street during the day, they're, they're packed. They're, they're filled to the brim with, with parking and filling up all the stalls. So you can't guarantee on any of those spaces. When we did our development, we were told we had to have one parking stall per unit. That was the rule. So we have one parking stall per unit and we have studio apartments. These aren't even one bedrooms or two bedrooms, these are studio apartments. And I can tell you at times, sometimes parking is an issue. Some people want to have two vehicles because we'll get a married couple in there. They want to have two vehicles, but there's, there's an issue there. So talking about 163 units downtown here next to our property and without adequate parking, what's that? Without adequate parking, I think is a serious problem, something that needs to be considered. Some other issues that I see with this project are, we have an easement that goes, let's see if I can point to that. Our property has an easement that runs through here. When we did our development, When we did our development, we had to, the staff required us to have this signed in writing that we had this easement put in place because we've got garbage truck access, we've got fire truck access, we've got moving trucks access. The easement, the way they've got their property planned is that they've got an 11-foot-high parking tunnel or through, way through there. That is not high enough for a garbage truck. You need at least 16 feet to get through there. Fire trucks, probably more. And then you've got moving trucks as well that need to access our property. Restricting that easement to those types of vehicles limits us to that one skinny driveway coming off of Center Street, right there. Basically big enough for one vehicle to get through. So if, if the garbage truck needs to get in our property, it could not go through that easement. That is our rightful easement, that's recorded in place. It'll have to go up that skinny, that skinny driveway right next to our property. And, and then I've got a letter here from, from Ace Garbage Disposal that I can hand out to you, pointing out some of their concerns that they have with, with that plan. Do I pass them over here?
Thank you.
So I've met with the, a regional representative with Ace Garbage Disposal. He's the, they empty our garbage can. He has some concerns. Using only this driveway, they will not be able to turn in there and do a straight shot to empty the trash. In order to do that, they would have to cut through three or four parking spaces in here and then back up here and then go into the, to dump the garbage. That's impossible because those parking spaces are generally filled. The other option would be to get the garbage can on rollers and pull it out 20 feet, which increases our costs and liability and things. And then dump it that way. But there's another problem with that idea too, because the garbage can we have in there is too big to be pulled out on rollers. So that's, that cannot happen. The other problem with that idea is when the garbage trucks entering that driveway, it blocks all access. So if someone pulls in behind us, one of my tenants pulls in behind us, all of a sudden they've got to back out onto Center Street, which is very dangerous. Also, the garbage truck needs to back out 100 feet down that driveway, which is also very dangerous and concerning, and back out into Center Street as well with that huge truck. So that is a, a problem. Other issues, moving trucks that come through there, if they've got a trailer, how are they supposed to back out onto Center Street? As you can see, there is very limited area in this parking lot. There's absolutely no way trucks and things and trailers can do a U-turn in here and come back down here. it almost feels a little bit like a double standard. I mean, to try to push this through when we were required to have this easement in place for those reasons that I have specified. And if this building goes up as planned, then we will not have access to our easement, which is one of the requirements that the staff pointed out, that maintain access to the easement for the adjacent property owner. Well, I can't see how we can maintain access at 11-feet-tall access through there. It needs to be at least 16 feet and probably taller to accommodate other vehicles. So there's some serious issues with that. Also, in discussions with the developer three years ago, we presented these concerns to them. And I will, I will add that nothing has been done to resolve our concerns for this property. Three years later, here we are. They presented it to the, the Planning Commission and trying to get this through without resolving these issues with us. Also in their plan is that the easement on the north side would be shut down for at least one year. That is just simply unacceptable for my tenants in that property. To be limited to that one access at the front on Center Street, that is not acceptable. We cannot, we cannot operate that way. That's dangerous for our tenants. We cannot be shut down for a year while construction is done. Also, at certain times of the year, Center Street gets pretty busy, right? There's carnivals and parades and it gets blocked off partially right in front of our building and limits access again there too. so as you can see, there are some serious issues with the way the project has been planned. I hope I've been able to articulate that strong enough because it has serious impact on all my tenants living in that building and in the neighborhood all around about. For this gentleman in this house and, and in the neighborhoods roundabout, all the vehicles are going to spread out to the neighborhoods. I don't think the parking is sufficient and is a serious problem there too. But we have rights to that access, that easement. It shouldn't be limited to that 11 feet. And there's a recorded easement in there. There's also a prescriptive easement that is 10 more feet on the south side and 13 more feet on the north side. So the plans don't accommodate that either. So those are my concerns. And it is my desire and request to the commission body here that you deny this proposal as it stands. It doesn't work and it needs to be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to speak to this matter? Please state your name for the record.
I'm Spencer Ball. I'm the attorney for the property owner to the east. The Harmon House is, is commonly known. I wanted to mention a few legal concerns that, that we have. First, as has been clearly indicated, we've, we already have an easement 23 feet wide and which has been actually in place as an easement since, since the 1890s. There's no question that their easement is there and an easement is a property right, every bit as much as any ownership right of property that exists, that's enforceable in court. And this easement, this body regarded as not sufficient without a further demonstration that the property owners, the existing property owners at the time would give their complete assent to the fact that that easement exists. They, they granted another easement. And again, this easement is for the garbage trucks that's 16 feet high, for fire trucks and moving trucks, which this body said was necessary. And if, if for any reason this plan were approved, my client has no alternative but to go to court, which I believe is the next step after this, this body makes this decision, to protect its easement right, which, which is, again, I emphasize is a property right, that this will be litigated if, if the, if this plan is approved. And once again, while it is true that the developer and my clients met three years ago to try to see what we could work out, we worked, we couldn't work out an agreement based upon what you, you've just heard, what was articulated by Mr. Harradine. And the reason, for the reasons given. Now, since that time, for three years, we never heard a word from this developer or any agent or attorney from this developer since, since we tried to work things out. But what we, once we heard, I just heard a week ago that this, this was coming before this, this panel. And, and I found out barely at this time, it's the same developer putting forth the same plan. And where these issues haven't been addressed in these three years shows that they're not resolvable. The, the easement that we have by right is something that we cannot resolve just to give away when it is so essential to what my client needs for his property. There are other places where this developer can build a project of this huge size that is feasible and adequate, that, that rather than to build it in this small area of space. Or this, this project can be scaled down, dramatically scaled down in fact. So the easement rights of my client and other concerns can be properly met. And for these reasons, I would, I would earnestly, in all earnestness, urge this body to, to reject this plan and to not give it its approval based upon these demonstrated unresolvable issues, especially about this easement, as well as the other issues. And I would submit it on the, on that basis.
Thank you. Are there any, any other members of the public who would like to speak to this matter? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Julia Smoot and I live south of this proposed development. And I, like Ron Margie Smith, live in a historic home. Our families have been here long before any of this development came about. And our dedication to preserve homes in Provo and keep the aesthetic nature of what Provo used to be is our determined course. First of all, I wanted to thank the people who developed Harmon House for their sensitivity to the neighborhood and to beautiful restoration of historic structure in Provo. I thank them from the bottom of my heart for addressing the true needs of Provo and doing it so well. So I'd like to address the aesthetics of this proposal. First of all, the design does not fit historic downtown. I live next to a six-story parking structure. People do not use parking structures. I have employees of the state and county complex. They park in front of my house for eight hours. They do not use the parking terraces. So that's a misnomer. I know, think, we think ideally people would like to use a parking terrace, but they don't. I went up this morning at 9:30 a.m. on the top level of that parking structure, not a single car up there. So I know parking is there to be used, but it frequently is not. People like to park on the street. The setback, everything else on that block has a setback from the sidewalk. And so I'm wondering why this rises six stories straight up from the sidewalk with no setback. We have so much high-density housing already in the downtown area, it's causing all kinds of extra traffic problems. I realize we've got street issues right at the, at the time, but every time I try to leave my property, it's, it's traffic. It's a nightmare. Do we need so much more high-density? Just seems to me that developers are really taking advantage now. I would propose that if this could be minimized somehow, not quite so tall, not quite so big, not right up next to neighboring structures. Those would be my concerns this night. And thank you so much for your time and for your interest and for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, any other members of the public who would like to speak to this matter? Please state your name for the record.
I'm Janet Peer. I also live on Center Street on Fourth East. And I, like Julia and Mr. Smith, we, we give a lot to the city of Provo because we do live in this area, but it's a historic area. And when we lose that historic area, we really lose Provo. You drive down Center Street, we've got those beautiful sycamore trees, we've got this history that can't be lost. And then we have this monstrosity that's going to be built, six stories high. We already have so much parking we have on Center Street. It's like Julia said, cars are parked in front of our house eight hours a day. But it's the parking that concerns me, it's the size, and it's the aesthetics. It just is another eyesore when it could be something historical like the Harmon House. They went to great lengths to keep the, the history of that and we appreciate that. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item? If not, I'll invite the applicant to speak to any of the issues that were raised during public comment.
So I agree with staff's recommendation that I don't think that this is something that, that probably ought to be argued or discussed here, but just for the sake of going through a couple of things, the Harmon House has 30 units and 30 stalls. They're parked one-to-one. We're 167 stalls for 136 units. And so we have far more parking than, than what it is that they're providing. So just to give you a little bit of background, the easement that they, that they claim that they have, which they didn't obtain with any consideration, meaning they didn't pay for it, is only 10 feet wide and there's a power pole that is in the middle of it. So really the easement necks down to like seven or eight feet, which according to code is not even wide enough for cars. They shouldn't be allowed to be going back and forth through something like that. The entrance off of, Harmon's entrance off of the others, the, the rest of it that they claim is a prescriptive easement, which we don't believe that they have. The entrance off of First East for them is like 18 feet wide. It's plenty wide enough. I don't know why the staff would say that they need two entrances in and out of that building. We have 136 units and we've got one way in and out. There's really not any need for 30 units to be having a dual ingress and egress with regards to moving, trash, everything else. I also have two letters from Ace. I can give these to you. I've, I've sent them to the Planning Department. I've got a drawing that's been done by my architect and I sat down with their safety engineer. I brought him out to the site. Their safety engineer is over all of the trash removal for Ace Waste Man, for Ace Management. And this letter, I'll just read it to you and I can give it to you. In my 30 years of experience in dumping trash, Ace is able to dump the Harmon House from the Harmon entrance off of Center Street. If the Ace truck is not able to dump the six-foot yard can at the Harmon House by entering off Center Street, Ace can put two small cans on wheels to dump them. It's easy. They pull them out, they dump them. It's not a difficult thing. Therefore, in my opinion, there is no need for Ace to access the Harmon property from 100 East in order to dump the trash at the Harmon House. So some history on this, it's, to me, it's just an, an attempted obstruction. We've, we honestly, the way that the easement operates right now is not in the ideal location for us at all. Originally, we wanted the entrance into our parking to be able to come off here because we get far longer, more long runs of parking. It's way more efficient. I don't have to break my site into, into two pieces. The retail would be able to, I'd be able to get another bay all, and make it continuous all the way down here. It just, it, it's come at great cost frankly, that we've provided this easement. So we did have discussions with, with Dave Harmon. I don't think it was three years ago. We've had them fairly continuously, but it's been a little while. And, you know, they expressed their concerns. They did not want to cooperate with us in any way. And I said, look, we, I, because I, at one point, we said, well, can you, can we move it? Can we just come in off this other part portion up here? They said, no. So I said, I'm not going to argue over this at all. You have a tiny 10-foot little wide easement and so we are going to make this thing 20 feet wide, change our plans completely around to accommodate you so you can have two-way ingress and egress through your property, right through our site. If you look at our plans, there's an opening on the back of our plans that allows for two-way access in and out for everybody in the Harmon House. I would prefer to wall that off, to put a security gate on there so nobody can come in and out, so their residents can't drive through my property. But in order to accommodate them and to just make this process smooth and to go through, we let, we, we opened this thing up and allowed not only this, an eight-foot easement, but we're saying we'll widen it to, to 20 feet, which is what we've done. My point is, we've done just about everything that we can do to accommodate their property. My point is, we've done just about everything that we can do to accommodate their property and have not wanted to get in any type of conflict with them. We just have said, "Look, we'll do what we need to in order to accommodate you guys." The argument over dumping trash is a false one. ACE can get in and get out easily. Our trash bins are right here. They're on rollers. We will roll them out. They get picked up and they get removed. The waste management is a very, very simple thing. Moving trucks, all of the same stuff. This happens every single day, every day, with apartment complexes like this, where moving trucks and stuff like that get in and out. I've got my attorney here. He can maybe address any other issues or questions that you may have.
Well, you've acknowledged the easement by your design. Is that true?
Basically, I haven't acknowledged the easement. What I've said is, I don't want to-
Designed the building to allow that because of the easement?
Yes. What I've said is, I just don't want to get in a battle. I just have said, "Let's just make it easy and allow them access through the property."
And I can appreciate that, but you've heard from the gentleman's lawyer that you're going to invite a suit. Is there a way to resolve that in a manner which will preclude that? Because I could see an injunction stopping the project.
For what?
I don't know. Court suit.
For what? How are they damaged?
Well, that's what I would like to know. I'm not a lawyer.
No, I know. And if they want to do that, they're more than welcome to go ahead and do that. I'd like to know how they're damaged. Because frankly, there's, I cannot see any way where we are damaging their project. We are in fact, we have in fact accommodated them in every way possible. Every time we provide a solution, they come back and say, "Oh, but now my garbage truck can't get in." Well, the garbage truck can get in. So, you know, we've done pretty much anything, everything that we can do to accommodate them. I don't see how, when they've got 30 units and easily one way, two ways now, in and out of the project. I've got 136 units and one access in and out.
Has the city attorney looked at this in any way?
Well, we don't believe that approval of the project plan will negate any easement rights. The easement discussion or arguments between them, we believe that this respects what we believe is an easement. So, we believe that the planning commission can approve the plan and they can continue the discussion about the extent of those rights between themselves.
If I may-
Please state your name for the record.
Barry Johnson. Thank you, ma'am. I participated in a meeting with Mr. Christensen and the neighbors, the Harmon folks, three years ago. And, we researched the easement. And I want to address the question that you just asked, sir, from a legal perspective. What we did is, we were trying to do a development that would accommodate Mr. Christensen's original plans. That went nowhere with the neighbor. They didn't want to accommodate that. So we left the meeting, and our choice was, okay, they have a 10-foot easement right here. That's not even enough by code for a vehicle to come in off of 100 East. So I said, "McKay, what you could do is, you could have a plan that goes right to that 10-foot easement, and they'd never be able to use it." But of course, he doesn't want to create that issue. He wants to be a good neighbor. So what he did is, he went back and he redrew his plans entirely, and he accommodates this easement by not only the eight to 10 feet that it is, but widens it by 20 feet. And so the design is for them to be able to get in under code with an easement beyond the 12-foot code amount. Now, what we want the panel to understand is, right now, they have an easement that's recorded that's 10 feet wide. This prescriptive easement that you heard Mr. Ball discuss, it's a fiction. It's a figment of their imagination. In all of those three years, we never saw one shred of evidence that they have declarations of use for over 20 years. What we do have is neighbors describing what the agreement's been for the last 20 years, and there's no prescriptive easement. They say that planning commission required access vis-à-vis this easement. Well, clearly, all that was required was that 10-foot easement, because that's all that's recorded. So my point in getting up right now was simply to tell the panel what the fact is. And the fact is, if they were to bring a lawsuit, it would be over in a heartbeat, because we not only are respecting their easement, we're widening it. And there's, I don't know what more we can do. And if it's, if they choose to bring a preliminary injunction, it'll be resolved in about two months. So, it's a risk we have to take. I will say, and I'm a little disturbed by it, after the meeting three years ago, they say they never heard from us. They did hear from us. We not only changed the plan entirely like it's designed, we gave them the explanation from ACE disposal, how the truck can get in without any problem off of Center Street. We sent that letter, and all we got back was, "Well, we disagree." With no evidence from ACE disposal contradicting our letter. In fact, Mr. Ball contacted me a few days ago and said, "Hey, did you resolve the garbage issue?" And I said, "Spencer, two and a half years ago, I sent you a letter demonstrating how ACE disposal says they can get in very easily through Center Street." And he said, "Oh, will you send that to me again?" So I did. So they've had it, and they've understood it, and they've never once refuted from a legal perspective how this design doesn't work for them. I hope that answers the question about the legality of the easement. A prescriptive easement, as this panel likely knows, is one that has to be established by a legal declaration that this has been used, the 20-foot wide space has been used for 20 years without any hindrance or encumbrance. They say that they have evidence of that. They've not shown that to us. So, when we go to court, that's what it'll be about. But, that's a misnomer too, because we've already respected that. That's what McKay was telling this panel. We don't want to fight over that. Okay, you think you have a prescriptive easement? We'll respect it. We'll give you 20 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGinn is going to address the commission.
It's been a fun evening listening to the attorneys, their back and forth. So let me lay out legally what your responsibility as a planning commission is. This isn't your issue. An approval of this project has tonight, is based upon whether they meet the requirements of the Provo City Code. Not whether somebody, a third party, has a property right through an easement over their, over adjoining property. That's a private issue for them. Having said that, any approval you can, that you would give tonight, can't be used by the applicant as a way to extinguish a right that someone else has. And so, you can't, by giving an approval tonight, extinguish somebody's property right that they may have an easement, whatever that may be. And you're not here to determine the nature of that easement. That would be for the parties to agree on, or if they can't agree, go to court and have a judge tell them what the nature of that easement is. But that's not an issue for the planning commission. So while this is maybe an interesting discussion for you tonight, it really has no bearing on your decision. And your decision is, based on Provo City Code, does this comply with Provo City Code? And at the same time, as a condition, I guess if you did want to put a condition on relating to this, is that any approval given can't be used to extinguish someone else's property right, which is not really a condition. That's just how the law operates on this.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Have a chance to rebut?
I'm sorry, sir. We've closed public comment. So, I'm turning this back over to the commissioners for comment, discussion. Mr. Howard? I'm sorry, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I would just comment that in other projects that we've done, while they met requirements, they've, we have discussed, and they have taken lengths to move or lower in order to not block as much as physically possible, where this house seems to be on the, on the north side, almost directly adjacent to this. I don't see how taking one level off the top is going to make any difference whatsoever. And so, you know, while, you know, the one that comes to mind is, I don't remember what, South, but on State Street, and we had to move it out to the road and lower one level, and that helped somewhat, I guess. But I don't see how doing anything like that's going to remedy for the property to the north. But that is, that is a concern of mine, that doesn't look like that there's anything that can be done, honestly.
Mr. Anderson?
For staff, just kind of relative maybe to the history of zoning and what the zone permits here in terms of just numbers, units per acre, getting to, what latitude do we really have to talk about, any modifications? And maybe for engineering department, I think oftentimes with any 100-plus unit project, we talk about the impact that traffic is going to have on intersections. We, I know in the past, have required traffic impact studies and some of those things. But, where are we at now in terms of zoning and what they can do?
So, it's been, the project that they've proposed has been reviewed, and it meets all the requirements within the downtown one, the DT1 zone, as far as unit size and building height and all those different aspects. The one thing that they need to meet their project as proposed would be that TDM approval for the parking, for the residential portion of the project.
How many units per acre are allowed in that zone? What is the max?
There's no limitation. Your limitation on density in the downtown zones and the ITOD zone are your building height and parking ratios and those types of things, your amenity space, those types of things that impact how many units you can get within the building. But there is not a density cap in the downtown zones.
And this property's been zoned this way for years now?
Yes.
Like four, five years, 10 years?
The downtown rezones took place just before I came to work at the city, which was 10 years ago, so it's been at least that long.
Wow.
Yeah.
And is the, is the edge of that zone at 100 East, or how far, how deep into the east or west does that go? I can't, I can't remember.
See if we can put up a zone map. Let's see if we can put up a zone map.
Okay.
On traffic and the traffic study, I mean, driving through adjacent intersections to this property on a daily basis, and I know that construction's been kind of a game-changer for the past while, but when you're waiting two and three cycles to get through an intersection, it seems like that's probably a pretty poor level of service. And, you know, not so much as to this project, but the collective impact of things in a remote area and other parts of the community. We've been very particular to try to limit anything that's going to change the level of service at intersections and that sort of thing. Is that a consideration here? I think you're the most appropriate maybe to throw that out.
Mr. Day?
David Day with Provo City Public Works. We reviewed the traffic study and didn't notice anything peculiar. So, although the downtown experiences higher volumes, it is, you know, the downtown, and there is congestion. And with the single access, they'll probably experience more onsite congestion where they're all trying to get out at the same time in the morning out there, one entrance. So it's really impact on them, so.
Okay. Thank you. So it would, we had talked a couple of weeks ago about the idea that potentially there are several projects like this, maybe in the wings, things coming online. And I'd love to have a better understanding just to how, how traffic's going to be handled. You know, again, I might be wrong in my belief that, you know, what we'd consider to be failure were there today. And I say that with this, just to be clear for the applicant's benefit. And I just live a few blocks away, probably would be one of the more impacted people on the commission, walk by the site every day. I think it's, it's an appropriate use for the site. But it's mind-boggling still at 183 units per acre, that, that, given how sometimes we deal with zoning, and we're very, very careful about granting those rights that come with zoning, that here we're dealing with a project that's at that point, and some of the things that Commissioner Smith touched on that are routine for us to be able to hear from the public and get input, maybe as part of an approval process related to zoning, can influence design and some of those kinds of things. I'm amazed that we're at a point now where the property's zoned. And, I mean, think of a project that went through this body probably just over a year ago, where I think there were at least two designs that, I know there were two that I saw, and I think there was at least one before I was on the commission. And, you know, that was at a location where it's going to have much less impact on adjacent properties and things like that than this one would. So, for whatever it's worth, I'd love to maybe understand what we can do to not be put in a position where we're, we're committed to this kind of density repeatedly in this part of the community.
I'm going to weigh in briefly too. I don't know what the setback is between the north property and the house adjacent to the north. It looks like it's very close. Is it five feet, 10 feet?
I'll check.
But my point in saying that is you're, you essentially have two zones, two different zoning conditions that are backing up to each other. And I would strongly recommend that the city council and the planning department consider, since we're now, we now have two zones, correct, ITOD and downtown, that permit higher intensity of uses. But, what you really need to take into consideration is what happens when adjacent land uses are impacted. Some municipalities require what's called a transitional plane. So for example, this building could not come down 90 degrees and meet the single-family house sitting next to it. They would require that building to be stepped back at a 45-degree plane.
Yeah, we only require that when there's a difference in zone, in zones. So in this case, there's a difference, if you look at the math, there's a difference in uses, but there's not a difference in zones.
So that home is also in the DT zone?
Right.
But a lot of times, what they will do is, if it's an existing resident, single-family residential neighborhood or historic homes, they require those inclined planes or transitional planes. I would just strongly consider that, or strongly recommend that that be considered as a future element in the zoning code, because I think you're going to see this happening more and more frequently as Provo densifies and redevelops over time. That was my comment. Ms. Ellsworth?
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we approve the project plan for this residential and commercial mixed-use building with the following conditions. One, approved plat will need to be recorded to combine parcels once bonds and fees have been paid. Two, approved TDM agreement is recorded. Three, commercial parking agreement allocating 37 parking stalls from the RDA is recorded. And four, maintain access easement for the adjacent property owner.
May I suggest a correction?
Sure.
The staff report and the conditions you just read said 37. McKay talked about more than that, or trying to negotiate for more than that. So how about if we say at least 37?
At least 37 parking stalls from the RDA as recorded.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor of project plan approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, project, item number six, project plan approval is approved unanimously. And in the interest of the commissioners, we'd like to take a brief five-minute break, and we'll be right back. and we'll be right back.
I wasn't here last time. Did we get, did we get away from tiny public comments?
Uh, we have some secretary. I haven't even told her about that.
We could have. All right.
And I could front of my client last weekend at Lenin. She said, yeah. That is a great detail. I will do that.
Glad you had the courage to put the bullet in.
It was selfish. I needed a break. I was going to, but then I got.
All right, we will now resume the planning commission hearing. Our next and final item of the evening is item eight. Provo City Council Office requests amendments to the general plan text for the general plan update with citywide application. Brian Maxfield will present this item.
Thank you. I, uh, think most of the presentation might be by Cliff Stracken, our, uh, executive director of the.
Is that what your title is? Executive Director?
City Council. You had this on as a discussion item at your last meeting, so you did get some good background that way. And, uh, we did pass out some comments that, uh, Austin Corey made based on, uh, T-Mac's comments and just kind of, uh, doing some of those, uh, these are things we couldn't really get out to you earlier, so I apologize for that. It's been tough to kind of catch up. There've been the, uh, neighborhood comments, I think we included with your packet, not neighborhood comments, but the website comments, so you could read through those and get some ideas. And, uh, I think if it's okay, I'll just turn over to Cliff and, and let him kind of present this end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, the planning commissioners, uh, Cliff Stracken, uh, council office. Do we want to show the presentation? You've seen the presentation. I see we have two members of the public. Do you want to see the presentation?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. But we'll streamline this one. I know you've had it.
We don't have it loaded.
Oh, you don't have it? I thought you. That's fine. That's fine. In short, for your benefit, come to council in two weeks. Seriously though, the, um, the existing general plan has been in place since 1997 with, with occasional updates. The last update, uh, major update, if you will, was back in 2010. And, um, one of the things over the last several years under the Curtis administration, the, um, there's a divergence in terms of the city's operations where Vision 2030 became the guiding document, not the general plan. And so the council feels strongly that the general plan is the guiding doc, should be the guiding document of the city. And so they undertook an effort starting about 2016 to, um, try and align the 2030, uh, composite version of, became a Vision 2050 draft. And we decided that the, the way to proceed was to align the 2030, 2050, uh, goals and, and objectives into the general plan. And so with the participation of the community development department, uh, we have been streamlining the various sections of the general plan into one, uh, more up-to-date document, uh, reviewing the various, uh, goals and objectives and trying to, to, to have them fit better. Uh, is the document perfect? No, there's still some work to be done, as you saw with the comments from T-Mac and others that we saw from some of the neighborhoods. And, uh, we're working to address those. We're still working on the priorities, prioritization of the, um, the goals within and the sub-goals to streamline those. So we have a couple more weeks to clean those up before we present them to council. But what we're asking for you, from you is a, uh, a vote of support, uh, for the, the effort that we've made and the document that we've arrived at at this point with a recommendation to council to, uh, to approve. And we'll have two public hearings on June 5th and June 19th at the council. And, uh, we'd appreciate a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Anderson?
Questions about different documents that we have in Provo? So the 2030 vision, the 2050 vision or Vision 2050, is that done? Is that a, a work in progress?
No, the 2050 was never formally adopted. It was an effort that was started to, to try and move that process forward. Uh, when, under Mayor Curtis, when, when he decided to run for election as a congressman, that effort died. And we decided that rather than go through the whole 2050 process and then the general plan, let's get these things aligned now and then we'll come back. Council has a priority that they're, they're planning for the next year and a half is to start a new vision, uh, process for, for, with 2050 as the, as the target. Um, but they wanted to start with a cleaned up general plan, uh, going forward.
So we have a general plan. We have these other vision documents. We have, uh, transportation element of the general plan. Maybe it's called a master plan, something like that. We have a parks and recreation element of the general plan.
Yes.
There's language in this document, um, that kind of touches on those things.
Yes.
One thing that I've struggled with, just as a planning commissioner, to try to get my head around is where to look for reliable direction that's not contradictory, you know, that's synced up, that really is.
Right.
Pushing in one direction. And, uh, the lack of references to some of the other documents in this concerns me from that perspective.
What you're seeing there, and I, I hear what you're saying, so what, what, what you're seeing there is when you take the vision document as an aspirational document, the general plan provides some general guidance subordinate. And within those, we are linking the, any up, any master plan that we have will be incorporated by reference into that document. So when the master plan, when a master plan is adopted, uh, that becomes the guiding master plan for that element.
An appendix to the general plan?
As what?
It's adopted as an appendix to the general?
No, it's adopted right into the, to, it's right, adopted right into the text by reference. So in other words, when you look at it online, you'll see, you know, the little blue line that, with the hyperlink and it'll, you know, we may talk about, um, oh, give me exact, uh, transportation, something about roads. And it will say that, you know, basically for more and for, you know, for more specifics, go to the master plan. And it'll name each of the different master plans. Some of the areas, as you go through them, some of the areas don't have master plans set up yet or, um, and, and so we anticipate over time that we will, um, revise those sections when master plans get adopted. And then what we wanted to do by having it more generalized for the general plan, as a master plan gets updated every five to seven years, the newer one comes in and that's the effective document that, that guides under the, under the general guidelines of the general plan.
Okay. How was, and I might not have the most up-to-date copy. This is what we received via email three weeks ago, maybe. Is that still?
It's substantially the same. The only thing that's really changing is we are tweaking the order of, of the goals and objectives.
It seems like there are a lot of different voices, if you will.
Yes.
Uh, from a writing perspective.
Yes.
Represented here. How was this created? I mean, and it almost seems like different things were just simply taken off shelf or out of another document and inserted without there being a cohesive authorship.
Yeah, that, that was probably the biggest challenge we had, is we had different teams working on different elements. And so you will have some disparate, uh, some disparity in the voices. We're still trying to align some of those, but we wanted to have a good starting point to move forward, uh, because we know that the process takes a very, very long time to, to get more cohesive. But our, our real anticipation was, was to combine the various sec, or take the various sections and consolidate them down into eight general plan elements and, and then work from those. But our, our bigger task was really to realign the goals and objectives and have those, have those fit. We weren't as concerned about having the exact same voice and, and tone as we, as we went through it.
Okay. Were goals and objectives in this conflict with one another? How do you move forward with that?
We'll reconcile those and we'll have to bring some of those things, we, we recognize we'll have to bring some of those things back to the council for amendments.
Okay. So this isn't really an update. It's just kind of a compilation of some existing work. And I, I'm struggling to see how that's beneficial as a stepping stone maybe to something else or for any other purpose.
Okay.
So, um, you might have to talk really slowly and go to the basics for me to get it. I understand that, but, um, and I'll say this, not that I'm jealous, but in my experience, when you talk about, you know, a land use growth and urban design chapter and different things like that, um, or other elements of a general plan, typically they come via a planning commission. And that's really, you know, one of the key responsibilities even and reasons for a planning commission to exist. And I, I'm perfectly happy with somebody else doing heavy lifting and things like that, but I do think these are things that, as a body, I mean, they, they impact the things that let us spend hours and hours a year some night talking about.
Sure.
So I think we need to understand it and make sure we, we are comfortable with things as they go through a process like this. So, sorry, to get back to the basic though, the, the main value that you see this providing for the city is, is what?
Pulling the, pulling the goals and objectives that are encapsulated in the existing general plan and the vision document into, in, into one more aligned, uh, document. And we recognize that we're going to be coming back over time with various elements and asking for changes and, and cleaning them up and, and making them improve. But right now, right now, the, the, there were, there was a lot of disparity between the, the, the vision, uh, goals and objectives and the existing general plan. And the state law requires that, expects that the cities are supposed to operate from the general plan, not from a vision document, and, and we needed to get those in alignment. And so again, it's not perfect. It's going to be a work in progress for the next couple of years, but we needed to have a good baseline to start with as we move forward, rather than starting from scratch and, and, and taking three or four years to go through the process. We wanted to have something back in, in alignment.
Okay. So what you've described to me is a draft. And I, I completely appreciate the idea. You've got to get to a starting point where maybe you can really have something to vet and to get input on and to maybe really make progress from. Um, and that's how I view this. This is, I think, it may be a very, very suitable first draft, but I mean, just among other things, to take a document that's to take a document that still is talking about the Meridian School and what you do with that property. Or I think that property's been redeveloped now for several years and just some different things like that. I think still, this is, this is a draft. And you might have, you might be able to, to solve my, my main concern just relative to the urgency of moving this forward. If we know that it needs additional work and we recognize that, why not take care of things now before we take another step with it?
Well, we see this as taking care of things. We recognize that there's, obviously, you just stated something that we've overlooked in there, right? But where we're at right now is we're using a document that is vastly... The existing general plan is vastly out of, out of, out of date. And so we're really trying to get it to something that's more workable as we move forward. And this is a high, this is one of council's highest priorities.
Ms. Ellsworth.
Along with what Cliff was saying, I think in my mind, the two most important things that we've done with this is 2030 is actually an adopted document. It's a formal, official, adopted document of the city, and so is the general plan. But there's some major conflicts, or not major conflicts, but there's things and goals and aspirations in the visioning document, which is really a 60,000-foot view that the council wanted to get incorporated into the general plan. And so that was one thing, is to bring those into alignment, get them together. And the other thing is, this really is kind of a reorganization of the general plan so in the future it can make it easier. Because you're talking about the transportation master plan, the park plan. So what had happened with the general plan is we had these fairly lengthy chapters dealing with parks and recreation or transportation. Then we went out and did all these master plans, the transportation master plan. And it was getting really difficult to keep those reconciled in the, in the general plan itself. In transportation, we had conflicts between the transportation chapter and the adopted transportation master plan. So part of this is to do a reorganization of the general plan, to make the chapter like transportation much simpler with broad principles there and then reference and incorporating in by reference the transportation plan for the detail and meat of things. It'll make it easier for us as a city to maintain and organize. So the first thing was the alignment and bringing the Vision 2030, which is an adopted document, and the general plan, which is an adopted document, more in line together than a reorganization without really much substantive issues taken at it. So we wanted to get the reorganization done without really diving into the substance yet. And then that's the next step. Once we have this reorganization, then let's get into the substance because that's going to take quite a bit of time.
Ms. Ellsworth.
So I'm just reading from state code here. Section 10-9A 403, General Plan Preparation, states, "The planning commission shall provide notices provided in section 109A 203 of its intent to make a recommendation to the municipal legislative body for a general plan or a comprehensive general plan amendment when the planning commission initiates the process of preparing its recommendation." So this says to me that the planning commission has to notify the public before this process ever, ever starts, right? So when the planning commission initiates the process of preparing its recommendation. And then right after that, state code says, "The planning commission shall make and recommend to the legislative body a proposed general plan for the area within the municipality." So I'm really wondering what our, our process is here because to me, this says that we should make and recommend a plan to the legislative body and not the opposite.
And I think that's what's happening here. Because what you have is staff, and we've worked with council staff, is now presented to you. We now have this on the planning commission agenda. It's been noticed and you have a draft. You know, every staff report or every item that you get, we, you know, put it on an agenda, initiate it, bring it to you. And so the planning commission is doing that. And now it's, the planning commission can make a recommendation.
Do we provide notice to the public?
Yeah. It's on the agenda. We provide all the, the legal notice that's required to be...
Of its intent to make, okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's right there.
Yeah. And then are we, are we really...
And it's the municipal council asking the planning commission ultimately to start this, this process and do it, to move this along.
Yeah.
Gotcha. So, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm a little confused about the process as well because you mentioned a moment ago that they started on this draft in 2016. It's now 2018. We got this two weeks ago, or maybe it was three weeks ago. So, and you can see it's a substantial document. And we have people on the commission who are not planners. Some of us have that luxury of having a professional background. That is, to have a simple PowerPoint sort of overview, that was appreciated. But I think that it really should have been presented to us much sooner if you're so, in such a sense of urgency to adopt it. And I think that it would have been wise to perhaps present it to us in, maybe by section, and say, "This is the urban design and land use section. And here, here is where we were. These are the substantial changes. Here's how the Vision 2030 affected it and why we're changing it." But to just throw it on us and say, "Two weeks," I think is a disservice to your commissioners, quite frankly.
There's a lot to learn here and...
There is. And commissioners, honestly, the, the general plan, I believe the general plan and the, and the state law, you know, calls for this to be updated every, every several years. And it hasn't been updated since 2010. And, and so it's past due. And I think that when I talked about drafts existed from 2016, the 2016 draft was really a staff effort to start working on updated vision, vision document. And I believe the mayor's, the mayor's office and administration started working with community development to go out into the, into the, into the community, had some open houses and started working on some drafts for the Vision 20, 2050. By the beginning of 2017, council was anxious to get this, get this moving. So we started working on some drafts of updating and found it pretty onerous and then asked the planning department to, to help us work on that, on that draft. And really, it was more about consolidating and bringing everything into the eight elements than it was about an entire recasting of the general plan. It was just trying to get things into alignment. And I'll agree with you, you know, had we done it differently, and this is the first time I've worked on an updated general plan, it would have been nice to have taken it element by element into the, to the planning commission. We just felt that it was important to try and get the 13 different sections down to eight before we could even really have that more in-depth conversation. That's what we're trying to do, is a more consolidated working document.
I think...
That, the, I just had one more item. The general plan updates that I've worked on as a consultant always involve the planning commission. We had town, town hall meetings. We had working sessions. And I haven't seen that happen here. And that's a concern.
Okay. Noted. Thank you. And the element, really, again, here, we really haven't introduced new things. We've, we've kind of cleaned up old things and taken things out, updated it and consolidated. It hasn't been a reimagining of the entire general plan.
Well, could, could we further refine this draft and, and bring it up at another time when we've had a chance to discuss it? I, I appreciate my fellow commissioners. They always bring some insight that I haven't even thought about. And that kind of dialogue brings a lot of things out.
Yeah, I suppose we could. I know council's anxious to get, get this, this one adopted and then work element by element through a broader process.
Then I will just say they should have included us more in the process.
And that's probably my fault and I apologize because when I outlined a plan to, to move this forward, I hadn't, I hadn't considered how important that role was. And we thought, we actually thought we were doing, trying to do you a favor by not burdening you with all of, you know, all of it in a shorter frame of time. So I apologize. That was my, my call in terms of the recommended process for that.
I would, I would propose that, I mean, there's two different ways to do this. One is you bring it as it's brought and it's an umbrella. And that's all we're really approving is the consolidated shell of a few things. And then we know that we're going to get into the guts of it. And it's, all those guts have to come back here for approvals, one by one. I dislike approving something that needs a lot of work. I would, I don't want to have it, I don't necessarily need to have it perfect the first time because no law, no ordinance, no anything is done, is done perfect the first time. They're all up for change. But I would almost say, if we were to move forward with this as it is, it would be on the basis, as was proposed by Mr. Anderson, that it be proposed or approved as a draft, recommended as a draft only, knowing that it's going to come back to the planning commission to work on along with planning staff and with the council office to make it a new draft, a better draft, a more close to real draft in the very near future. And then we still have a chance to be involved in that whole process. Otherwise, you know, we're just going to push it down the road and, or recommend that it be pushed down the road until we can really work on it and get, and make a first-time clean presentation, so.
So that's really the issue for you tonight, is what is your recommendation you want to make to the council? And is your recommendation to the council pass this, change it, formally make the general plan, and then send it to the planning commission and go through it, chapter by chapter, with the robust public meetings and all of that? Or you recommend to the council, don't approve it, send it back to the planning commission and go do it, and then come in and approve?
I don't know.
Because that's, that's...
Mr. Rowan.
That's what the council, I think, is ultimately looking for, is the planning commission's recommendation of how to proceed on this general plan.
I understood it a little bit differently. I understood they, they were looking for a recommendation on the document.
Yeah, I did too.
Rather than how to proceed, which with that being the case, I, I'm not looking for another project for sure. But the idea of continuing this, potentially to take some time to sort things out, maybe have some dialogue with the city council along the way, that...
Mr. Anderson, I think, I think the intent of council was, what they'd really like to do is have this adopted, adopted so that it goes into the code as, as, as our general plan. And with the recommendation to come back and say, you know, what would, I think what I'd ask you to do is, is recommend it to, to be adopted as a general plan, but then provide the additional direction that the planning commission would then like to see each element come back in order to, to, to do further work on them and further refinement. And that way, we've got a document in the code that we can work from rather than a draft and a, and a 10-year out-of-date document.
I don't know. Ms. Ellsworth.
I would just say that it would be, I think it would just generally be more efficient to work on one draft instead of approving drafts incrementally and not knowing which draft we're working on or what's been approved. And I think maybe developers would agree, right? They don't probably want a new general plan every month. And then back to that state code, it says that planning commission should make and recommend. And so if we can't make and recommend, if we're not involved in that making process, can we really recommend and are we really following state, state statutes?
We are. Definitely we are. Because if you make a recommendation, now, your recommendation with this document tonight, if you make a recommendation to the council to adopt it, that's your recommendation.
I'm not just talking about the recommendation. It says make a general plan and recommend a general plan. And I guess my point is that we haven't been involved in the making. The recommending, yes, that's what you're asking here. But where, where are we following the state statute of making a general plan when the planning commission, who that's tasked with in state code, hasn't completed that? Does that make sense?
It, it does make sense, but the reality is the planning commission, if you're talking about, the planning commission drafted this. I don't know any planning commissions that actually draft the plan, right? Staff does it, a consultant does it, through, through things like that. So planning commission's never making, you know, you don't sit down as a committee and go line by line, word by word, and make a plan. Nobody does that. And so by making a plan, you make a plan when you say, "Okay, this is our plan. We're recommending it." So you've heard what, what council wants. Now, it doesn't have to be your recommendation. What council, you can make a recommendation to council, say, "Hey, we recommend you don't adopt this. We recommend that you send it back to planning commission and planning commission goes through it, chapter by chapter, and do all that." You can make a recommendation to council to adopt it. And then, and then have it come back to planning commission by chapter, chapter by chapter, and go through it. Those are your, those are your options. And so whenever you, you make a recommendation and make a, and offer a formal, if you were to formally say, "Adopt this," that is making a general plan and recommending it.
It's the tolerances we're all trying to work with in the, in the scheme of things.
Yeah. And Cliff's doing a good job of representing what council and their desire. They felt that somehow Vision 2030 supplanted the general plan, you know? Personally, that's not my opinion. I don't think legally that's what happened either. And, but want to align it, we think, you know, but that, to me, is really an irrelevant conversation. It's how do we align this and get plans that can be inconsistent with each other consistent and move forward with that? And so now you've got something, you've got a draft that's trying to, ultimately, the goal is to simplify things, align things better. Now, planning commission, you make policy recommendations to the council. And one of the policy recommendations or the policy issue before you is, tonight, how do you, what's your recommendation to the council, the best way to go about it?
Mr. Anderson.
We're just talking about advisory documents. There are nothing more than that in Utah, right?
Yes, unless we have an ordinance that says it's mandatory and we don't.
Okay.
So this is an advisory document.
We probably don't have a lot of that in Provo, right? There's a connection ordinance-wise to language in a master plan or the general plan. I'll tell you that I completely appreciate what I've heard you say in terms of having a desire to realign things. I hope that part of the discussion is maybe coming up with ways to make things more concise. But I guess I'm struggling with two things. And frankly, I think I might have been too kind when I said "very suitable draft" a little while ago. I think this does need a lot of work. I mean, I'd feel bad for a community like Provo to adopt this, even if it's with the understanding that it's an interim kind of a thing. But also, maybe this goes to the process. The thing that I struggle with the most is what do you do with a general plan document when you've got a neighborhood plan and an area plan and these different master plans and things like that? So to get beyond the first step of understanding how they all fit together and what they are or aren't relied on for rewriting those so that language is consistent, or maybe doing away with them in the effort of coming up with a document that somebody can actually carry and read and use when you're making a land use decision.
Why don't we refine the draft and bring it back? And maybe in the interim, we can have some discussions about the parcel so we can get some buy-in and some genuine, genuine knowledge on it. Because honestly, I was going through it and highlighting things and going back to other sections and going like, "Well, how's that fit in?" I think we'll be a better product if we do something like that. That's my worry about it.
And I, I just want to state how important the general plan really is. There are a lot of plans in Provo because we are a big, diverse, dynamic city. But again, according to state code, it says, "After the legislative body has adopted a general plan..." no street, park, or other public way, ground, place, or space, no publicly-owned building or structure, and no public utility, whether publicly or privately owned, may be constructed or otherwise, or authorized until and unless it conforms to the current general plan. So there is a lot of gravity there despite the fact that it's, you know, an advisory document. And I, I just want to get it right.
Yeah, that is the one exception to an advisory document, is public things need to comply with your general plan. So if the city puts in, we want to have a park somewhere, and we don't have that in the general plan as a park, then we need to amend the general plan for public things, public buildings.
Your point is, it's a plan. It's a, a plan is a moving thing in itself.
Yeah. And, and, and the current general plan has had updates, you know? How many general plan amendments did we handle last year and, and pass on? So the general plan does get updated every year. And this is more of a large, comprehensive update. So, so if your recommendation, frankly, what I'm hearing is Planning Commission saying, okay, we, we understand the general concept of what you're trying to do, to realign this, to reorganize it, simplify it, bring in the other plans that make more sense, that are more specific plans, because we've got neighborhood plans, area plans, transportation plans, park plans. And to get all of those in, in a more simplified way of dealing with it. So council, we recommend that you don't adopt this new plan, this current plan, but that you send it back to Planning Commission and we start proceeding with it and let us go through that. That can be your recommendation. Now, how the system works, the council can take that recommendation, say, thank you very much. No, we're going to pass this, and then we're going to ask you to go through it.
Well, that'd be all right, too.
And I, I think you're also hearing, just to kind of add on to what you're saying, for at least what I'm hearing from Mr. Anderson is, this is like on a, kind of a structural, even kind of microscopic sentence level, you know, just detail level, unsatisfactory, if I'm right. I mean, is that, is that what I'm hearing from you? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I mean, I think you're saying there are things in here that have no right, it, it wouldn't appear that they've been looked at at all with any kind of care, or with, with enough care.
Enough care, maybe.
Enough care. And, you know, I think this, I mean, I, this may not need to be part of this conversation, but I mean, I'm, I'm really sympathetic to the position that you're in. I mean, I don't think we have enough people to do this stuff. I mean, Provo hasn't, hasn't staffed all its parts well enough. There's, there's a general resistance to giving you the people you need to do the great amount of work that you need to do, in, in my opinion. I mean, I think that there, there's this, that general resistance to keep, you know, city government small, you know, all that, all that kind of thing that comes with the kind of political, like, kind of place that we live in. So I, and I certainly, I don't think that critique is, is a critique of, I think it's a critique of the system that, that this plan grew out of. But I, I also want to say that, I mean, I think this, this, on a, on a bigger level, this seems to me like it could be an opportunity were the City Council to take seriously the conversation that we've had here, if, you know, if that gets communicated to them. Clearly, an opportunity to work more closely. I mean, I think one of the, one of my biggest frustrations over the years has been what appears to be, you know, a, a general kind of gap or distance between the things that we do here and then what happens at the City Council. And I know we've tried to facilitate some of that interaction through meetings. And, and my sense still, though, is that, you know, the City Council's going to do, the City Council's going to do, and, and a general plan, like, a collaboration on a, on a general plan might be one way to, you know, to get together on, on, or to, to work more closely together, to have some kind of communication with each other. It seems to me that that might be, at a big level, the ideal thing that could come out of, out of this. And that's what I would, would love to see is, you know, if, if the general plan does get taken seriously by, by them and we work on it together in a kind of back-and-forth way, there's that possibility. Now, again, I understand that all of this is, requires work and it, you know, it sounds like it's work that the Planning Commission in general is willing to do, you know, when, when it's presented to us, or when it's given to us in ways that we can work on it, rather than a kind of massive dump and then, and then not much time to, to do things. So, you know, it, it would require that, but it seems like, what I'm hearing is that the Planning Commission desires that.
Again, I really appreciated the way you phrased things. You, you gave us a suggestive motion a minute ago. And before I get on that path, I'm just going to say, I regret coming across as negative about this is, you know, where it's at in terms of a work in progress, maybe, and that sort of a thing. For a general plan preparation process to, to really result in what we need it to, it's got to be, it has to be unifying and bring people together and that sort of a thing. And I, I think we're certainly still where that can happen. I move that we recommend that the City Council not adopt this in its current form and that they remand it back. It is a public hearing, that's right. So, Mr. McGinn, do we need to go down that path?
Yeah, you need to open it up for public comment.
Okay.
And then close it and have discussion.
Oh, that's right. That's a good point. That was a good catch.
That was a good catch. Are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item?
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item?
Oh, there are. Oh, all right.
And please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Adam Arnett. I've been pretty involved with the city over the last two years. But yeah, I am 31 years old. I have, well, before, I wrote some things down. I just got a comment on the mustache. That is a beautiful spectacle, my good friend.
Thank you.
It's on public record that I respect that. All right, so I'm, I'm 31 years old and I have a, a rich professional history in both business management, business investments, and real estate development. So this is all part of things that actually mean a lot to me because I've seen how thoughtful activity in those three areas really do impact the city. So when we talk about general plan activity, we're talking about not just plucking one string in a spider web, we're plucking several. They're all going to vibrate and reverberate with, with the effects of what we do here. So I've lived in Provo since 2008 and in my current neighborhood for over seven years. By all means, given my single status, I am a cash cow for the city who supports his neighbors and community. Everything we do here in the council chambers is about sending a message and setting a precedent. We should be very judicious in those things we do here because of those two items. Now, I've been successful in my career. I could own property, but I currently choose not to. And that should not impact the benefits the city affords me and where I rank as a priority for the city. Now, this is a, this is a behemoth of a document, right? We've, we've held it in our hands. I have questions and concerns about many parts of it. But I particularly have issues with Sections 3.3 and 3.4, some of those guiding sections. There's insufficient time to, at the podium today, to review all of those items or other items in the rest of this document. But I want to say a couple of things. As currently drafted, this document is ripe for manipulation and agenda neighborhood politicking. I've been very involved with the council, with past planning commissions, and with the neighborhood program all over the city. You can ask a number of neighborhood chairs. I've been at their meetings, I've been in their elementary schools, I've been in their homes. I was in a home last night of a vice chair, talking about parking permit programs. Creating incentives with city ordinances, mandates, and funding to specifically promote and protect owner occupancy lays the foundation for bias and prejudicial treatment of residents and is counter to the messages that Provost should be sending and engaging in. We should not promote language that creates a preferred class based on property ownership or familial status. We should not create and bestow either formally or informally a preferred status to those with economic wherewithal to be property owners. Two, similar to me, there are a number of residents who desire to live in Provo and have no desire to be property owners at this current time. Three, there are thousands of young, single professionals that contribute meaningfully to their community. Now, none of these three groups should be made to have less position and/or standing in their communities. This document, as we're currently looking at, does lay the foundation for that. We need to explore new metrics that reflect the true health and vitality of a community. Owner occupancy is a biased and dated metric. It is inappropriate to project a vision of the American dream on all residents who may not share that same view. It is appropriate to reemphasize that all renters are not neg, or are not negative influences on neighborhoods. It is appropriate to reemphasize that not all renters are short-term or non-contributors to a healthy neighborhood. During, during what I call a reurbanization of America, this era, we need to be extremely thoughtful with our messaging and innovative as we approach evaluating planning standards in an ever-changing population, especially in an existing historic city. I like to echo the concerns of Professor John Enfranca from Suffolk University and emphasize that we need to be extremely sensitive in how we project the trends of the past and the successes we've seen in planning in the past upon our evolving communities and demographics. Again, we should not create city priorities that promote specific demographics and discourage others. This document would do just that. I believe that there is considerable language and intention in this document that still needs to be workshopped. I want to support a document like this, but due to its current language, I have to be a vocal opponent of it. I think there is some workshopping. I'm uncomfortable with some of the language and how it identifies priorities. I would request that the commission, that you postpone this for an additional review, evaluation, community feedback. It is appropriate for the commission to receive feedback, not only at the council level, but this should be an area where citizens come and say, I want to be involved with this. This is a great place for it to happen, not at the voting and legislative stage. I would ask that you pass this tonight or recommend it for tonight only after you yourselves have thoughtfully, thoughtfully reviewed and considered the entirety of the proposal and how it impacts the rest of the general plan. I know the council is anxious, but there's considerable weight that can be applied with documents like this, especially this document and this proposal. This should not be taken lightly. For this commission to have meaningful input into the council, your involvement should not be a hurry-up-and-pass-along formality. Give this its due time. I would be more than happy to meet offline at a later date with any commission members who wish to discuss my more detailed thoughts and comments on different elements of the proposal. I have a lot. I'm an opinionated guy. And I have domain experience here, and I'd be happy to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Tatiana Quinn, and I'm resident of Provo, who has also been involved in some city conversations lately. And I would just absolutely agree with some of the notions I've been hearing from the commission tonight that it would be appropriate to have read through, for one thing, and also gone through and discussed this, this proposed general plan before making a recommendation to the, to the council. So I would absolutely hope that, that the commission would, would do that. Especially in light of some of the things Adam was saying. I also share some concerns, especially in Chapter 3, the housing chapter. And I would ask that the commission really take a look at, at some of these, some of these proposed language, languages of, of Chapter 3. In particular, I would like to draw attention to what is currently reading as Goal 3.4.2. It says, "Protect existing owner-occupied housing and neighborhoods and encourage an increased percentage of owner-occupied or long-term residency housing in Provo neighborhoods." At the offset, it might seem like this is just saying we want to protect, we want to protect owner-occupied households from, you know, anyone trying to interfere with their ability to stay, owner occupied to stay where they are. What in reality, this is meaning, and what I've, I've, I've come to see a lot of comments on this topic lately, especially in regard to home, home, homeowner-occupied houses versus renters, is a, when you're saying the message, we want to maintain homeowner, home-owning occupiers rather than renters, that message is saying, when a homeowner leaves in its, in his or her place, we want another homeowner, rather than a setup where they are renting. Or when a family leaves, we want a family to come into that place, rather than a group of unrelated, single adults. And this type of language, especially the language 3.4.2.5, provides sufficient housing options for single professionals as a means to increase family occupancy in the single-family areas. In other words, provide alternative housing for single, young, single professionals so that in the places intended for, in the single-family areas, we increase family occupancy, that is blatant language saying, we prefer families in this neighborhood over singles. It is very discriminatory. And individuals can have discriminatory beliefs or, or viewpoints, that is fine. But this is a government document. And although it is advisory, like Ms. Ellsworth said, it is, it does have a great weight, not just on, on the, the mandates that it gives to public buildings, but it is very influential, obviously. It's intended to be very influential for private citizens and, and ventures as well. And I would really ask you to, to go through and to look at this issue and other issues. Like Adam said, I would be open to discussing other, I would, you know, appreciate the opportunity to discuss other language that I am seeing that has similar, what seem to be political agendas and statements that I do not think Provo, it would be in Provo's best interest to make, given Provo's general notion that it has portrayed throughout its years, that it wants to be a welcoming city, not just its slogan, but other language in the general plan. I could say more, but I will stop there because that's just what I'd like to say. And I thank you for letting me address you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Please state your name when you approach the podium.
My name is Sean Watkins. I apologize for my tardiness. I meant to be here earlier. I am familiar with the general plan, and I've been a resident of Provo for the past 10-plus years as a student and as a working professional. Worked in many tech companies in the area as well. And I'm also a homeowner, as well as a landlord, for a rental facility. So I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar with, with everything going on at the moment. The, the primary concern for me, and I'm not going to state, to restate everything that Tatiana just said, because I do agree with her. The primary concern for me is the future of Provo and where we are headed. We have a wonderful university here, BYU, and we also have a new medical school up and coming very soon here in the East Bay area. And so with, with that in mind and with the projection that Provost considered to grow substantially in Utah and considered to be one of the highest-growth cities in Utah over the next few years, I think it's very important for us to understand what type of individuals will be moving to Provo. Especially with both universities and the medical school in particular coming in and drawing in a educated, professional, but not necessarily long-term residential crowd. We need to be cognizant of that and make sure that we have a welcoming community for those individuals, specifically. I, I, I love Provo. I am a, a very big advocate for everything going on here. And one thing that I'd just like to propose once again is to reevaluate some of the language stated here to focus primarily on homeowners, long-term homeowners, and especially not being any type of prejudice against students or professionals coming in to grow their career here. Because I think we would be missing out on a huge opportunity if we were to do that. And I, I won't take up any more of your time, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is Jess Haddo. I have lived in Provo for three and a half years this time around. I'm a- I'm a recent new homeowner, and I think the direction of the city is something that I care very much about. I think in Utah in general, we're coming up, we've been experiencing the symptoms of a housing crisis, where we do not plan well for growth, and we want to zone and keep things the way they were. I think this has led to discrimination against different types of people that don't fit the cookie-cutter image of what we want, what people say they want in their neighborhoods. And what happens is, we end up driving out those very people we say we want to keep here. In 2002, it's a study that's a little dated, but the National Bureau of Economic Research released a study, and one of the things they said is, they said, "In places where housing is quite expensive, zoning restrictions appear to have created these high prices." I think we need, as a city, to be very careful about how we approach our future. It's very tempting to say we want more rules, more zoning, to protect the way things, to make things the way we want them to be, but it usually ends up having an adverse effect. We need to embrace demographic change and embrace those people that would make this community very healthy and diverse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Rebecca Lane, and I've been a resident of Provo probably four or five years. I've been around for 10, 11 years, though. So graduated from BYU, decided to stay because Provo's a wonderful place. And by profession, I'm a journalist. So as a journalist, yesterday I got to attend the Valley Visioning Summit. I'm not sure if any of you were able to attend that. I might have been on the other side of the room, so sorry if you were. But that, what we were discussing is everything that has to do with this general plan, right? And I'm also concerned with the housing aspect currently as the plan is, but I want to speak more generally about what we discussed yesterday and why, what we discussed, I've had alarms going off in my head as I've read the housing section specifically. So we hit the big three topics yesterday, which were housing, transportation, and education slash the workforce. And so, as you know, Utah County, Utah in general, we have a housing crisis, as we like to call it. We have one in eight homeowners already who are in a housing crisis of their own, where they're paying more than 50% of their income to pay for their housing, which is a major problem. And so we can't limit people's opportunity for growth. And by setting these laws, we're hurting the vision as was, I heard a lot of discussion between educators, business owners, and government officials, nonprofit organizations yesterday. And one of their biggest concerns is that we're allowing the culture of our communities dictate how we're setting our laws, as opposed to allowing the facts and stats, statistics to dictate how we are setting our laws and setting our plans and goals for the future. And I just want to make sure that as you go through this plan with a comb, that you are really considering what is best for Provo in the future, for Utah County, and being part of the solutions, what we're facing, instead of trying to fix it with problems that really aren't going to fix the problems we're trying to fix. And that's what I see right now the housing section doing, is trying to address a problem, but it's not going to solve the problem we want it to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we will close the public comment at this time, and I'll return it to the commissioners for discussion and our motion.
I'll just say, really quickly, I mean, bravo to you who came and spoke so eloquently. I mean, I applaud you for being here, and I think it's this kind of perspective, you know, that we need to hear on the general plan. I think that the plan, again, I don't know all the details of the process, but I'm imagining that it wasn't, you know, it wasn't vetted or run by people who come from different kinds of places and positions. I mean, as Tatiana was reading the language there, I heard in a way that I didn't hear, you know, when I read it myself. And certainly, when you plug in, instead of, you know, some of the language that's currently in there, you know, "We want white people to replace white people," and, you know, we look up, we look back on that time with horror now, and I've been saying all along, I mean, this comes up over and over again, the kind of rampant rent discrimination against renters in our city, and it's, you know, it's appalling to me, but I haven't, you know, so we hear that in the narrative, meeting after meeting, but I, you know, to have it kind of encoded in our, in our general plan is really fright, you know, really appalling to me. And I thank you for bringing that to our attention. This only, I think, reinforces what I, the direction that I think we were going in anyways, but for a different set of very compelling reasons to me. So anyways, just thank you for coming, and I hope we can involve, you know, we can set up a process where we involve some of you who've, you know, volunteered to continue offering your perspective and opinion. I mean, I think that'd be very, very valuable.
Mr. Howard.
I was just going to say, though, not having a detailed understanding of this document per se, but in previous conversations, I will tell you that the Provo City Planning Commission, the staff in Provo City are cognizant of many of the things that you're talking about. So you certainly wouldn't have been privy to those things, because, you know, it requires repetition, but they've come up over and over in different ways, and I think that that's a good thing. Affordable housing is a concern for the city in general.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. There are a dozen other cities in the county, probably more than that, that I think need to hear much more from you than Provo does. Tonight, we approved a project, 183 units to the acre, aimed exactly at your demographic and to provide housing for you, and there's not another city in the county that would have done that. So just to offer a little different perspective, I think Provo's been extremely accommodating over the years, and that's, that's why you're here, that's why we're having the discussion. I think there are some things going on that I read about in the newspaper that might be fueling some flames at the moment, but from a land use perspective, there are a lot of bad actor cities out there. I know some very, very well, in terms of not providing housing for people that are inclined to rent that product in the end. And Provo City in this valley is not one of them. So as we move forward, and I appreciate what Jaimonson said, sorry, what Jaimon said, certainly, you know, relative to a process, I think this kind of dialogue is exactly what ultimately results, hopefully, in something that can bring people with different perspectives and ideas together, to where you get a document that really does represent the whole community's vision. And with that, is ready, do you mind if I, I move that we recommend that the city council, Cam, again, get a back off.
No, I was going to second it.
You're going to second it, okay. I need a second.
We're ready.
I want a second.
Can I speak?
Yes, please. Sorry.
We've heard a lot of comments, and I appreciate the comments that are made, a lot of the same comments we heard all the way through the RDL issue. Fundamentally, this is the general plan that you have. We have reorganized by consolidating the issue, the items back into, into the eight strict elements. We've updated things by taking out items that no longer apply. Now, in Mr. Anderson's defense, he found something that we've missed, right? The mermaid?
And I'm not trying to pick on the few things that I found, but...
What council is actually wanting to do is, they want to just get this consolidated as a document, adopt it as is, and then undertake what they call, what they want us to do is initiate with you a Vision 2050 process that will accomplish all the things that these folks are asking for, but we're just trying to take what we have now, take out the old stuff, just update it. You know, there are things, there's stuff that talks about stuff that doesn't exist from 20 years ago. We took those things out. But the only new things in there is that we took the goals from 2030 and aligned them in there with what's 2030's already been adopted and what was in the general plan, and we took out stuff that wasn't relevant anymore. You'll notice, if you compare the size of the documents, we've stripped out page after page of repetitive stuff that had been replaced by things like master plans. So all we're asking at this point is a recommendation to go forward so that we can start a Vision 2050 process that will take a little more time and be much more thorough than what we've got. This is just really, if you will, it's editing a document and making it smaller is what we've tried to do. Thank you.
So I guess I just have a different opinion about what this does for us, or maybe doesn't do, and because I don't see it really giving us much of a step forward, although I certainly appreciate the effort and work that's gone into it, and recognize that the city council, they call the shots, they'll do what they want, and we'll, we'll be right there with them. But I move that we recommend that the city council not adopt this proposal on the general plan update, that they remand it back to the Planning Commission, so that we can talk with staff about coming up with, you know, maybe a clearly defined process to work on relative to a comprehensive update of, or comprehensive general plan.
Do we have a second?
Me. I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
So adjourned.